Call to order the Stokes County Board of Commissioners, Planning and Community Development, Tuesday, October 1st, 2019 at 7 o'clock. As always, we'll start off with invocation. If you would please rise.
Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you give to us, and Lord, we just ask for your guidance tonight. Lord, we just ask you to do everything that's going to be pleasing to you. Lord, thank you for the many blessings you've given to us and for gifts we fail in. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Please continue standing for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May he be seated. Okay, get approved of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. As motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Foes. And there's what do our public comments? And we have, we have eight people who's signed up to talk. What we'll do is we'll put everybody over the three-minute time limit, so once that three minutes is up, you'll hear a timer, or you'll see me raise my hand. If you don't mind, just kind of wrap it up real quickly after that, and we'll move along. We'll go ahead and start with Mr. David Harrison. You're welcome, sir. Just state your name, your address.
Yes, my name is David Harrison, I'm the president of the Walnut Tree Community Association. I live at 1125 Average Ridge Road in Walnut Cove. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the people of Walnut Tree, one of the communities that will be boarding the solar farm, and recommend to the commissioners that y'all please approve this, because I think it's going to be one of the greatest things that ever happened to Walnut Cove. It brings the three ingredients that I think our town was looking for: jobs, tax revenue, and environmentally safe. As most of you may know, or the ones that you don't know, I have committed the rest of my life trying to make Stokes County, especially Walnut Cove, become the place that I grew up in, where it's safe for kids, play in the yard, pick up a water hose to drink out of it like I did as a child. I want it to be where our parents don't have to fear that their kids play in the yard. I want to build playgrounds. I want to help the schools build a better educational system, and I think leaning towards a healthier environment is a great way to start with these kids. And I commend each and every one of you for giving us this opportunity to come up here to speak, and I think this project will be a beginning of a restart of us undoing some of the damage we have done or may happen to our county. I know most of you that's my age or older want to leave this county just as good as it was when we grew up in it, and those of you that are younger, and have younger kids, want it to be that kind of place. So I highly recommend that we endorse these people, I work with them, I've been to all of the meetings, I've heard people's concerns, and I'm sitting on the board of directors of Appalachian Voice, as I'm, I don't know, watching our group, and all of the questions and concerns those people had, I have access to experts that may be better than these guys' experts, and everything they're telling us is true. The land, if it goes away, is just as good as it was before. There's no contamination will be left, and it will be a positive thing for our community.
Thank you, sir. Okay, up next is Ms. Linda Hicks. Also, if you wouldn't mind, just state your name and address.
I'm Linda Hicks, 1130 Rockford Madison, behind the Stokes County. In Genesis, we can read that when God created all things, he looked and he said, "This is good." We can also read that we're charged to be good stewards of his creation. Some of you know I've come before this body a number of times with information on the destruction of our land, air, and water from fracking processes, which leaves land worthless and a wasteland. This land and water cannot be reclaimed by landowners for future use. It also, I've also talked about the ravages of coal power plants producing energy along with a byproduct called coal ash, which pollutes our air and our water. Again, the pollution of well water renders homes worthless to sell or pass on to family members as some of us would hope to do. These processes affect communities negative, in very negative ways. Communities die. With the potential of solar power, it's literally like a breath of fresh air. Research doesn't present any long-term effects from solar farms. It does require some space, but so does fracking and coal processing. A powerful positive factor is that the land space can be reclaimed without any effects to the landscape or the water or the air. The property can be left intact for future generations. We'll have to make serious choices for the future. Which energies sources do we want for ourselves, our children, and our neighbors? I believe solar farms and rooftop solar can solve many of the problems for future generations. I challenge young people like some of you up here to investigate with an open mind rooftop solar for your homes and businesses. Solar presents no infringement on our children's health or our neighbors, and maybe we could look back and say, "This is good."
Thank you, Mrs. Hicks.
Good evening, I'm Buddy Tim, deal box 573 Walnut Cove. I've come to say a few things about solar farms. If the reason we are looking to approve solar farms in our county is the efficiency of producing energy, I am for it. If the reason we are looking to approve solar farms is the alleged problem of man-made global warming, I am against it. It is ludicrous insanity to think that 1.3 degrees Fahrenheit rise in the last 100 years, or NASA's figure of 1.4 degrees rise since 1880, is the cause for extreme weather, and then allege it is man-made. Does anyone say a 1.4 degree Fahrenheit change is unbearable? If our alarm is the unusual melting at the poles, then look to the one who controls the wind, the clouds, the sun. I would not be surprised if God is not giving us a warning before he melts the ice on Mount Ararat, where Noah's Ark is in Turkey. At the foot of the mountain is the Vineyard of the Eight. Nearby is Marco Polo's Trail and the Inn of the Eight. Behind all the global concerns is the globalists wanting to control the means of production. China and India are bigger polluters than America, yet we do not hear a thing about them. Nevertheless, if solar electricity with all its needs will cost us less, go for it. However, Duke Energy mentioned today that it wants to raise the cost of electricity on an average of $100 a year per customer. That is hardest on the poor and those on fixed incomes, and I would be against it. Whatever happened to the understanding that more people using the product brings the price down? Whatever you do, do it in writing, and not with limited liability, but total. There are too many unknown costs, and if the supplier of electricity can charge us more to cover the unforeseen cost, I'm against it. I grew up in the Garden State of New Jersey, when it was a garden state with apple, peach, cranberry vegetable, turkey, dairy, cattle, and horse farms. Farmers had to sell their farms because of the ever-increasing taxes. Housing developments took over. The farm near my parents' home had to get a historic site permit in order to stay. Please proceed carefully.
I do apologize, I can't quite make out this other one. It's Karen.
It's Kim Rippon, I'm with the solar company.
Okay, so you just want to wait till, you want to come and speak now, or you're using what you do to presentation?
I'll just make the presentation out.
Okay. All right. Okay. Mr. Tim Naive?
My name's Tim Naive, and I live in Walnut Cove on Old Town Road, and I own some of the, well, all of the land that they want to use on Old Town Road and Farmer Road. And you might say, "Well, I'm biased in what I'd say," but I would like to say that I hate cutting down trees, but the land they want has already been harvested about 15 years ago on some, and about 10 years ago on the other. And the part they don't want is where my big trees are, so it works just perfect for me. And as far as Duke Power, companies always want to raise the price or something. And it's supply and demand. The more supply you got, the more it goes down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Amos Elvis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and the audience tonight, and good evening to you, the Stokes County Board of Commissioners. My name is Amos Elvis, I live in Stokes County on Carson Watts Road. I'm a Stokes County Board of Adjustments member, along with this man over here, and retired Stokes County Fire Commissioner. I'm retired from a Fortune 500 company as an electronic technician, electronic technician. From my opinion, on electronics and power, and some on solar projects too, I feel that not enough information has been given to you guys, the commissioners, and the planning board. Believe me, there are environmental issues that you guys are not aware of. With the solar panels themselves, as a business opportunity for investors like Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and the big banks, and even Duke Power themselves, it's a good opportunity for them. What they're after is tax credits. With all this said, I would ask that you, the Board of Commissioners, table this for 60 or more days, and educate yourselves on the facts of solar deals for Stokes County. Solar is not a replacement for Duke Energy. It doesn't work all the time. I don't care who tells you this, it does not work, because I know I've worked with it. Thank you so much, and I'll yield the rest of my time to Mr. Robert Knight.
Up next, we have Mr. Ramona Tim.
Can I let Robert go in, or do you want to take his time?
It don't matter. She'll, 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 she'll take his time. Go ahead.
Okay. I can give it to him, it'll be four and a half minutes, I can give it to him. Yeah, I've got him down for four and a half, so it's fine.
Okay, good. All right. Yeah, I'm just going to ramble here. I live in Walnut Cove, I live on Summit Street, and I do also have concerns about the panels. The EPA confirmed that Gen X-related compounds are used in solar panels. In fact, there was a huge story about the Cape Fear River being polluted, and they had to really clean up big time. And the company that produced, that worked with these compounds has really come up almost, I don't know, 95, 96%. But there is great fears for that, because, number one, our panels are coming from outside of the United States. And if Lick Creek Solar has gone to China, or has gone to Indonesia, or wherever these panels are, and made sure and oversaw that, then I might be more, you know, willing to say, "Okay, we can trust these panels." But even in, back in 2013, when I was on the board for Walnut Cove, we approved the one solar farm that we have right now off of Fowler Road. They assured us it was safe, they told us there was, the solar panels to be installed require no batteries, copper, or glass. There is nothing hazardous to leak. The panels may have minimal reflection, but they are to absorb light, to produce the energy, not give off reflection. Now, I was told by the town manager that when you fly over that, you see a very nice lake. So tell me about no reflection. In 2019, this is an article, and I'll have to send you the links, I don't have them written to these articles, but in the Energy News Network, which is an independent project of fresh energy, again, they say nearly all modules are considered non-hazardous, and they can, in theory, be tossed into landfills. I know our landfill will take solar panels now, but you got to pay for it to put them in into our landfill on Sizemore Road. But then this article goes on to claim, and this is a solar energy company or independent group that supports solar energy, they say that these panels contain more than 80% glass and aluminum, plus copper, silver, et cetera. What is it? Do we have glass? Don't we have glass? Do we have copper? Don't we have copper? I'm getting confused. Do you see where I'm going? Okay, that's one. And then, of course, the concern about whether or not this is, these compounds are hazardous. I have more things I could talk about, but I will just say, like my husband, the rates are going up from Duke Energy. Decommissioning is very important, but I will finish by saying one last thing. We pay a renewable energy rider already for our energy, our electric bills. We already pay on green energy. And green energy is going to, if it's fully implemented, the green plans that they, we hear about so much, it will destroy our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tim. Okay, last, we have Mr. Robert Knight, and he had a minute and a half left over from Mr. Ames' time.
Robert Knight, 1220 Hubby Moore Road, Lawsonville, North Carolina. I spoke at the planning board meeting last week to make my concerns of the runoff and watershed issue known. Solar water conservation is still my main concern, but after analyzing the situation, hearing the talking points at the meeting, I noticed that everyone's question was answered. We will do, we will do everything that's required by the state. Is that supposed to be good enough? I will agree, most of the time, state standards are sufficient. The problem with this situation is North Carolina is in the beginning stages of developing a statewide standard for bonding, decommissioning, establishing what materials can and cannot be in these panels, including Gen X, and watershed requirements. So we're going into this project with no state standards on the industry, on a very unique project, in my opinion. I can just picture when something does happen, everybody will be pointing their fingers, could be years down the road. Another interesting thing is how the committee that's being assigned the task of developing these standards is given over two years. That's two years for a group of specialists, but Stokes County only gets a few weeks. I also feel it's necessary to use a portion of my three minutes to take up for Dr. Echol since his opinion was disputed for eight minutes at the planning board meeting. After reading through the minutes from counties that called on his expertise, I've seen there's a bit of bad blood between the attorney, Mr. Terrell, and Dr. Echol. I've not read all the minutes from all the counties that have opposed these projects, but I know, but I know Dr. Echol has been on the winning side of stopping a few of these projects. This doesn't make him completely illegitimate. As far as the claim he is fighting alongside a DC lobbying group, I don't know what that's about. I contacted Dr. Echol myself to ask questions, and because of the short amount of time, I asked him to come to speak to a few concerned citizens. He generously came out without demanding pay. Honestly, I just want some questions answered without the bias that's put on by the solar company and their attorneys. In conclusion, the commissioners are kind of in a, been put in a difficult situation. If they're opposed to it, they're going against all the people that have approved it this far, they're opposing something that is being pushed by the state and federal government, and they're opposing a project that is a revenue source that's badly needed in this county. But with all the things that I feel have either been overlooked by our state agencies, neglected, or the agencies haven't had time to respond, I'm worried we're setting ourselves up for another situation just like the one right down the road at the coal ash pile. Thank y'all. And I will say, I've not, I've not met Mr. Naive, but from what I've just talked with people in the community, he seems like a stand-up guy. I feel like he has the best of intentions of this project, and I just, you know, I think a lot of people want to see this work out and be everything we want it to be, and I don't want everybody at one another's throats over this like we've seen with the fracking situation. But I just have concerns, I'd like some answers, and I'd like everything to stay civil. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearing. I believe first we have our presentation from our planning director, Mr. David Seaver.
Hope I haven't overloaded you with information. This is probably one of the bigger agendas I've submitted to you in the past 30 years. But there was a lot of information, and there are people here that are far better able to explain your, and answer your questions than I am, but I am briefly going to go over what the application is. You have maps, we have larger maps here, if you'd like a better view, feel free, the applicant will submit everything, feel free to walk around and look at it, it's important to know where it's at. And I'm assuming everybody's familiar with the Old Town Road, Farmer Road, and then a big section of it, it will be accessed off of Burton Loop Road, off Martin Luther King Jr. Road. The request tonight is from Lick Creek Solar, they're requesting to rezone approximately 616.67 acres from residential agricultural to M1 CZ Light Manufacturing, conditional zoning for utility-scale photovoltaic facility. All the parcels are located in Saratoga Township. The site owners are DFC Stokes LLC, DFC Stokes II LLC, Tex-Mad, Tim-Mad, and Debra-Mad. The applicant is Lick Creek Solar, and again, I've already told you the site locations. There are five parcels involved with this, and I'll give you a little bit of information. The first parcel, 34.23 acres, is owned by Tex-Mad, Tim-Mad, and Debra-Mad. Another parcel, 78.02 acres, these are on Old Town and border on Farmer Road, it's Tim-Mad and Debra-Mad. Then Tim-Mad and Debra-Mad own 117.66 acres on the other side of Farmer Road. And then there's a 34.84 acre owned by Tex-Mad, Tim-Mad, and Debra-Mad off of Old Town. The largest tract is owned by the DFC Stokes LLC, one, and two is 351.92 acres within the county's jurisdiction. And it's important to look on the map, because the site plan, you'll see a dotted line, and that dotted line shows the jurisdictional boundaries between the county and Walnut Cove and the Terrell Royal Plantage jurisdiction. That part has already been approved by the town of Walnut Cove under a conditional use The proposal is, again, for this utility-scale photovoltaic facility producing 50 megawatts of energy. Portions of this property, as you look on your map, are, everyone is, has a little bit of floodplain area in it. The applicant has shown on their site plan here that they will not be involved in trying to place any structures, panels, equipment within the flood-designated areas. The parcels are not located in a drinking supply watershed. It is in a watershed, but not from the state-mandated drinking supply watershed, which we have a regulation on that. There's no septic or water approval for this site, no school districts involved, emergency services, Walnut Cove Fire, Walnut Cove VMS. You have a lot of attachments, and one of the attachments that you have from there is from Kimberly Horn, the engineering firm, which is going to provide erosion control at the time needed. These projects get started out, they're not going to do everything that they have to do if they're approved. There's a lot of expense involved, there'd be no need to do it unless a project is approved, but they are aware of it and have made, and it's noted on the site plans. Access, DOT has been made aware that this potential project may come to fruition, and the applicant will be required to receive commercial driveway access permits from DOT. I have included a traffic count for the area. This is from 2016, you'll see Old Town Road is 1,800 vehicles per day. Burton Loop, there were no counts available. Burton Loop's there in East Stokes Community Park, and it's not going to be a heavily traveled road, there's just a few houses on one end of it. Martin Luther King Senior Drive, 1,900 vehicles per day near 65 East, and 1,200 vehicles per day east of Crestview Drive. Crestview Drive is kind of the border where the houses and Walnut Tree subdivision would back up to the Walnut Cove portion of this DFC Stokes property. Farmer Road, which goes down between the maiden property, 1,300 vehicles per day between Old Town Road and US 311, and then there's no accounts available south of Old Town Road. The area surrounding is, again, is multiple parcels. The density of the development and area, there is Shackmark subdivision off Old Town Road, there's scattered houses, then you have, I think, 16 to 20 residents along Farmer Road. It's not, it's not heavily populated area, the density is low, it's typical rural Stokes County, once you get outside the urban areas. Issues to consider: potential tax base increase due to commercial property and the rollback tax. You have appraisal reports in your attachments, you also have a, from the state, you have from the tax administrator, Richard Brim, his opinion of what this could do. The acreage is not accurate as far as that, but he looks at it in the generalizations of how, he is the tax administrator, would look at it from a tax standpoint for Stokes County, the benefit, potential benefits that it could be for the county. Other issues to consider: you have a sustainable energy source, you have short-term job creation. The applicant has proposed to work with Economic Development Will in the Walnut Cove area. Walnut Cove asked that this happen, to look if approved from their end, if it is approved, but to create some short-term jobs, to help people get some construction jobs available while the site may be constructed. And it's been stated before, you want to consider the long-term effects of the project, and also compatibility with surrounding development. I received one call personally concerning this project, and there have been multiple meetings, and even though the project is multi-jurisdictional, it was kind of advertised as a larger project, this is the way they promoted it, but we are only taking care of the part that's in Stokes County's jurisdiction. Walnut Cove has dealt with that and approved their end of it. But there have been multiple public information meetings, which the county requires, and then board meetings in Walnut Cove, and also a planning board meeting here, and now the commissioners meeting. So there's been a lot of effort to get the information out to the public, signs were posted, properly advertised, surrounding property owners notification, so we've done everything possible or required by us to get this information out to the public. And get to the staff comments. Again, we're Again, we're looking at a total project, both Walnut Cove and the county, eleven hundred and thirty-five acres. It's a large, large request. All the parcels in Walnut Cove's jurisdiction were owned by Johnny Parsons. Five hundred and eighteen point three-three acres is what a plus or minus calculated for Walnut Cove and the county. Again, the request is for six hundred and sixteen point six-seven acres, and that's plus or minus a little bit there. After talking to the developer, uh, basically after you take out any wetlands or flood-prone areas that would not be utilized for the, uh, development of a panel or the equipment that goes with it, you had four hundred and seventy-five acres approximately that would be utilized for, uh, the actual, uh, solar farm. The applicant submitted information stating the project would consist of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred panels, uh, and approximately a hundred and eight thousand of those panels will be located in the county's jurisdiction. The project is engineered for a twenty-five-year lifespan. And again, there was a lot of talk about the panels. Uh, I'll let those people talk about it. They were proposed as a polycrystalline panel, six by three, eighteen square foot, and about twelve foot off the ground. Uh, and I'm assuming all of you have seen solar farms or maybe been to the one on Fallow Road in Walnut Cove to take a look at it. They're very similar in their setup and nature and how they're designed. You have fencing, uh, proposed, eight-foot tall with two-foot of barbed wire on top of that. Uh, I was at Walnut Cove there on Fallow Road looking. Their fence is a little shorter than that in areas, uh, but adequate to keep people out. They don't, uh, want people intruding onto this, uh, on the property if they're approved because of all the expense of the panels themselves. Uh, they want to keep it secure. Uh, the panels are also buffered, uh, the surrounding area. The proposed facility, again, you have in your attachments, has received approval from North Carolina Utilities Commission to construct a facility. Uh, Lit Creek Solar has updated their plan to the commission. The, uh, a, a portion of this, uh, to create this, uh, solar farm of Walnut Cove in the county, irregardless of whether it passes here, it's been approved to Walnut Cove. They have to build a substation, which would be located in the town of Walnut Cove. The substation will be the transfer point where they get the DC to AC to tie into the grid that is going to be sold to Duke Energy. The town of Walnut Cove approved the rezoning request of the properties in late August, and the Walnut Cove Board of Adjustments approved the conditional use permit for the request on September third to allow the solar photovoltaic facility proceed. From our standpoint, after reviewing the submitted documentation by the applicant for the proposed conditional use rezoning, the planning staff sees no problem with the request and feels that the creation of a utility scale solar facility on the extracts of land will assist increasing the tax base, as well as assisting in creating short-term employment opportunities. The conditional zoning aspect of the request limits the properties to the request that's submitted, and the nature of the large-scale solar facilities with their leasing agreements and large revenue expenditures help keep the use of the properties the same for twenty-five to thirty years. The proposed fifty, uh, megawatt electric production anticipated by the developer would be sold to Duke Energy. Uh, the North Carolina General Assembly has set a minimal percentage of eight percent of renewable power generation for Duke Energy, uh, by twenty-twenty-five. The conditional zoning process allows the board, uh, to request the conditions on, on the actual rezoning request. What I have submitted to you is basically, uh, if approved, if you feel this is recommended, should be recommended, then to follow the same conditions that Walnut Cove, uh, proposed on the site. Uh, there's a decommissioning plan, and as was stated before, and you have an attachment. Uh, there's been a commission stated by twenty-twenty-two that has to develop the standards for decommissioning. You also have in your attachments, uh, a document from Pine Gate, uh, that shows their decommissioning plan and proposed expenses. Recycling, uh, a part of decommissioning, the owner of the facility shall fully recycle all materials as reasonably possible. Again, there's multiple, uh, questions on how this, these products are recycled based on what sort of panels are produced. Landscaping, uh, the landscaping buffer Walnut Cove acquired is fifty-foot. When riding, now with existing vegetation, the buffer shall be no less than fifty feet in width. Uh, when using planted vegetation to conceal the facility, the vegetated buffer shall be no less than twenty feet in width. The final landscaping plan should be submitted and approved by myself or someone in the office, to ensure the compliance with the thing, with the, uh, with the submitted site plan. Finally, you know, we would recommend, uh, let me get on to that part, that the setbacks be, uh, for the whole facility be left at fifty-foot. Uh, the M-one district has its own setbacks, but there's no traditional front, side, and rear yard to a, uh, project like this. So fifty-foot is what Walnut Cove required from all perimeter boundaries, and we feel that would be sufficient, uh, to meet those requirements. As you will see, uh, in the, uh, public information meeting, you have the minutes concerning that. The applicants here can answer any of those sorts of questions. And you have a, uh, a statement of consistency and reasonableness that I have generated. If you feel this is appropriate, uh, I'm, I'm not going to read through everything there. You, you've got it. It's in the G-one low-density growth area transect zone. Uh, the twenty-thirty-five Stokes Plan encourages infrastructure improvements. It's not specifically going to mention a solar farm. It doesn't specifically mention cell towers either, but we, we have those as far as infrastructure improvements. If you agree with that, then you could, uh, you need to make all motions of showing that it's either consistent or not consistent, or reasonable and a not, or a not reasonable request. I've given you a, a back page when I gave you the planning board recommendation. Uh, just please make any motion concerning for or against, uh, in relation to those plans. Uh, the planning board recommended an eight-to-zero-one extension, uh, to approve, feeling that it was consistent with the plan. It was a reasonable request. Do you have any questions for me? Mike can answer. These people can answer more than I can.
You just answered like two questions, which was, what was the vote of the planning board? You said it was eight-zero and with one extension, correct?
One extension.
Eight-zero, one extension.
Yeah, so, so nine planning board members that we have were here.
And it is consistent with our twenty-thirty-five plan.
That was, that's what they voted in, and it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Yads comes from Morrison, Banning.
It's when one abstains, it's not unanimous, then, is it?
Well, it's unanimous, I don't know why he didn't give them reason for abstention.
I mean, is it unanimous or not unanimous? When one abstains?
I don't know.
I don't think it's unanimous.
I would, I would put it as a negative vote, but I just, he didn't, he didn't vote either way, so, uh... I just count it as we had eight in favor.
I don't think it's more unanimous, I'd say.
Yeah. I think he had some tires up with Duke Energy. I, I, I really don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Sutter. I apologize. I, I forgot your name just a minute ago.
Karen Kimmer, it's hard to pronounce.
I, I, it was kind of, I wonder if I couldn't read that well, but, uh, if y'all would like, go ahead and give your presentation. Y'all go ahead.
We have some notebooks to pass up, if that's okay?
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Karen Kimmer, and like I said, it's a hard name to pronounce and to spell. Um, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild in Raleigh, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Lit Creek Solar. Um, I'm also here on behalf of the property owners that, um, who are Tex-Mae, Tim-may, and Debra-may, and they are, um, here in support of the application as well. And what I'd like to do is to provide some kind of general information about the application and the plans for the solar farm, and then to provide some, um, some more specific information that's included in the notebooks. So, um, I'll try to be brief. Um, I have a number of people who are here with me today, um, in case you have any technical, um, questions, because they are, would be expert witnesses that would be available to answer any questions. So as you know, the, um, the proposed solar farm will be located off Burton Loop Road, Old Town Road, and Farmer Road. And the properties are currently zoned residential agricultural. And what we have proposed to do is to rezone them to light manufacturing conditional zoning so that the proposed fifty-megawatt solar facility can be constructed on the properties. Um, I want to point out that even though it's a fifty-megawatt solar facility, that fifty-megawatt solar facility is, um, the solar facility that would be located within the jurisdiction of the county and then also the town of Walnut Cove. It is a, with the properties within the county's jurisdiction is a large acreage, six hundred and sixteen point six-seven acres. Um, however, only about four hundred and seventy-five acres will be used for the solar farm. The remainder of the property within the county's jurisdiction will be undisturbed as, um, stream buffer, wetlands area in the buffer, and the flood zone areas. So what, so, um, before I move on to information about the, the rezoning application, the plans for the solar farm, I did want to point out that I, that I believe that this is a really excellent, excellent location for a solar farm. Um, it's located in, um, a low-density, um, area of the county. And, um, in this area, there is, um, relatively limited residential development, and there's also large tracts of vacant land and farmland. And then, as you will note from the site plan that's included, um, I think the information that Mr. Sutter provided, and then also the site plan that's, uh, placed on the, the larger board back there, um, transmission lines cross a portion of the property as well. And as Mr. Sutterth mentioned, uh, the town of Walnut Cove approved the rezoning request in late August, and then it also approved the conditional use, conditional use permit, uh, from its Board of Adjustment on September the third. And then last Thursday night, uh, the planning board, as Mr. Sutterth mentioned, recommended approval for, um, the rezoning request before the commissioners this evening. And so we have presented a very detailed application for the conditional rezoning request that demonstrates that this is an appropriate area to be rezoned for a solar farm, that the solar farm will be developed as a very environmentally sensitive project, that it will not create any type of a health hazard, and that it will not have any adverse environmental impact to the surrounding properties. And we've also presented, um, information, um, through expert appraisal report that the solar farm will have no adverse effect upon any of the adjoining, uh, properties to their property values, and that also the solar farm will be in harmony with the area in which it's to be located. And the parcels will be an excellent location for the solar farm because, um, a little bit more than half of the acreage, um, is currently used as pastureland, um, as was mentioned earlier this evening. And then the areas that will be left undisturbed are the wooded areas, um, and the areas with the large mature trees. And then in the areas where some of the trees might have to be removed, that would be the area that had been previously cleared and that would be scheduled, um, to be harvested again, um, not too far down the road. And also, the, the solar farm should have, will have no, um, adverse, um, visual impact, um, upon any of the adjacent properties because it should not be able to be seen at all. There'll be a minimum of a fifty-foot vegetated buffer from all property lines, which will, um, prevent it from being seen. And then I wanted to touch briefly on the process, um, before Duke and the North Carolina Utilities Commission. As, as I mentioned, the solar farm is for a fifty, the fifty-megawatt, um, facility that will provide, uh, clean and renewable source of electricity to Duke Energy Carolinas. And to touch upon one of the comments that was received earlier, certainly, um, solar energy, um, is not able to replace, currently replace, um, electricity that comes from, uh, the, the coal-fired plants or the natural gas plants. However, solar energy can certainly supplement, um, the electricity that is, um, provided through coal and through natural gas, which I think is, um, a very beneficial thing for the state and for the area. And, um, there's been, um, a significant amount of oversight, um, for this project. Uh, first of all, there's oversight through the North Carolina Utilities Commission. And, um, back in twenty, uh, two thousand and seventeen, uh, we submitted an application for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to the North Carolina Utilities Commission. And as part as the, of the commission's review process, uh, we are required to provide publication of notice in the local newspaper, and which we did do so back in, um, the spring and summer of two thousand and seventeen. And with that, um, public notice, there were no concerns or objections, uh, at the Utilities Commission about this project. And the commission, um, issued the certificate, um, on May the fifteenth of two thousand and seventeen. More recently, we have filed an updated site plan because there had been a few modifications to the site plan since two thousand and seventeen. And as part of the commission's, um, review process, we again provided, um, public notice in August of this year in the local newspaper, and the commission has received no concerns, no objections, and no complaints, um, about this project to the commission. Also, as part of the, um, Utilities Commission's review of the process, it goes through the, um, state, the North Carolina State Clearing House that provides a copy of the site plan and a copy of the application to a number of state agencies, including the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, the North Carolina Wildlife Commission, DNR, the State Historic Preservation Office, the Department of Transportation, the Division of, uh, Emergency Management and Floodplain Management Program. And the State Clearing House and all of those state agencies, um, completed, um, their review on September the twenty-sixth of the revised site plan, and they have fully signed off on the project. Um, and of course, um, what was noted in, um, and sign off on the project is that before any, um, construction activities whatsoever can take place on the parcels, that we will have to obtain, um, a stormwater and erosion control permit, uh, before any of those, any, any construction activities take place. So I'd like to move on to the application that we submitted, and, um, I have provided, um, the information under binders. And the second binder is labeled, "Understanding Solar Farms." And on the second page of that, um, of that binder, we've provided, um, information about, um, how does a solar farm work and what is involved with construction? And I think what's important about what's involved with construction is relates to the decommissioning, the later decommissioning of the project. Because the construction of the project is that the posts, um, are hydraulically driven, uh, driven into the ground, and then the frames are bolted, and then the glass panels are inserted. And since they're, um, the components are simply driven into the ground, they can be easily removed from the ground with no concrete or anything like that when the project is, um, decommissioned at the end of the lease or at the end of the useful life, useful life of the project. And then, um, a little bit farther down on that page, we provided information about, um, will this solar farm, um, produce any problems related to, uh, noise, odor, or traffic? And as the board probably knows, uh, solar farms are very quiet. They make very little noise. And the, um, little noise that they do make is described as being a quiet hum of the inverters, and that, that quiet hum from the inverters, um, is not heard, um, outside of the, um, facility limits. Also, solar farms present, uh, produce no odor whatsoever, and they also, once construction has been completed, they, uh, produce very little traffic. They will produce, um, only about one trip per month for maintenance purposes only, which is significantly less than the traffic that a single-family home would produce, as single-family homes produce about nine-point-five trips per day. And then also, um, solar farms, um, provide no problems with light pollution because they are obviously completely dark at night. And then, as Mr. Sutterth mentioned, um, this isn't related to, um, jobs for the area. On page four of this tab, we provided information that, um, the applicant will work with the town of Walnut Cove and the county's, um, Economic Development Office to hold a local job fair to try to, uh, provide the jobs to the local residents. And then on page five, we provided information about the decommissioning process. And at the end of the lease, um, the site will be fully decommissioned, and the property will be returned to the pre- will be returned to the pre-construction condition. And almost 100% of the components of the solar farm will be able to be recycled. And the decommissioning is required by the lease with the property owners, because that is included in their lease, and it's also required by the condition that we've included. The the conditions that we've agreed to are provided under the last tab of the notebook. And so we have agreed to a decommissioning process. And then additionally, on the next tab is labeled as tax revenue, and Mr. Sutterith already provided some information about Mr. Brim, the tax administrator's information. But I did want to point out that one of the the one of the points that Mr. Brim has made is that solar farms do not cause external obsolescence to adjacent properties. In other words, any adverse or negative impacts due to, as I mentioned, odor, noise, traffic to adjacent properties. And then the next tab is provides pictures for the Lit Creek Solar Facility that shows what the vegetative buffers around the perimeter of the properties will be like about five years after planting. And as you could see, there will be no visibility of the solar components within the interior of the site and in the solar farm. The next tab deals with information that the solar farm will have no risk to the residents or to the environmental health of the community. And rather than providing any risk to the residents, it'll in fact promote the public health and safety of the county and the community, because it'll provide, as I mentioned, the clean and renewable power with minimal environmental impact, and there will be no environmental consideration. Tommy Cleveland is here today, and he'll be talking in a little bit more depth about the solar panels and these environmental considerations. And then, as Mr. Sutterith mentioned, the the solar farm will be fully secured with an eight-foot tall fence. We have also provided in our notebook expert opinion that the solar farm will not endanger the public health or safety, and that also the solar farm will be in harmony with the area, as solar farms make good neighbors, as they are a low-impact use that again produces no noise, odor, and minimal traffic. And the solar farm will blend in with it blend in with the area with no adverse impact. And then finally, the the next to last next to last tab is a market study report that's been performed by Richard Kirkland, who is here this evening, and he is a North Carolina Certified Real Estate Appraiser. And he has provided a market impact study, and he states in his report, he's considered hundreds of solar farms, but he has highlighted 13 in particular in his report. And he has provided his expert opinion that the solar farm will have no adverse impact to the adjoining area, and that it will also be in harmony with the area. And then, again, the conditions that Mr. Sutterith mentioned, we have included the conditions that we are have agreed to in the last tab of the notebook. Finally, we are in agreement with Mr. Sutterith that the solar farm will be in conformity with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. This solar farm will allow the property owners to maintain these large tracts of land that will allow the help to maintain the rural character of the area for the next 25-plus years. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. I also oh, I did want I did want to mention one other one other thing pretty quickly. There was a newspaper article from Mr. Eckeland that was in the the newspaper recently, and I did just want to point out that he had presented some questions, for example, about decommissioning. And in regard to decommissioning, I think I've already mentioned that the this site will in fact be decommissioned, it's required by the lease, and it will be required by the conditions. And there is a North Carolina state statute that we are ahead of that statute by agreeing to the decommissioning, but a state statute will likely be enacted that will require decommissioning as well. He also mentioned trees, but again, this is this property is much in pastureland, and much of the forested area and the large trees will be preserved in the undisturbed areas. And then he also pointed out concerns about stormwater. Before any construction, as I mentioned, begins, we'll have to have the stormwater and erosion control plan and approved and the permits. And the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality classifies solar farms as being pervious, meaning that there is maximum absorption on the ground underneath the panels. And then he also mentioned a concern about how companies can come and then can leave. But as the board well knows, zoning conditions run with the land. And then also, the site-specific LLCs are very commonly used for individual shopping centers, subdivisions, and any other land uses that require financing, and certainly, solar farms require financing. So so I would respectfully submit that the concerns that he had listed in the newspaper article are not applicable to this project. So I thought it might be helpful if Tommy Cleveland spoke about, since there had been some concern about what was contained in the solar panels and the environmental considerations.
Yes, good evening, Board. My name's Tommy Cleveland. I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina and can talk to you about health and safety, potential impacts, and I'll focus mostly on the panels themselves and what may or may not be in the panels, and I'll try to keep my comments limited, but be glad to answer any additional questions. I've worked in solar for 15 years. 12 years of that, I was at NC State University at the North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center. So I was there as the lead engineer when a lot of solar farms started being developed around North Carolina, and there were a lot of these similar kind of questions and concerns that came to NC State. And a lot of those questions came to me working at that center in that role, and I was teaching solar classes at the time, as well as working on other other solar projects. Questions about what how toxic are these toxic, what kind of impacts might they have? I could answer some questions, but then also started doing a lot of extensive research, reading the academic papers that that were out there and following all the latest research. And in 2017, I was a lead author on a NC State paper entitled something like Potential Health and Safety Impacts of Photovoltaics that had 80-some references and was a peer-reviewed paper. So that paper concluded that there there was not significant, really insignificant risk of any kind of negative health impacts from the systems. And in fact, they directly offset the the burning of natural gas, and in some cases, burning of coal. So they've got air quality and and water and soil pollution benefits in that regard by reducing those those outputs. As far as the panels themselves, it's the same silicon technology that's been in use for over 40 years. There's panels with this technology that have been out in the field for that long. It's just that that long ago, they were very expensive. Now, the industry's grown and developed to we can make them, the industry can make them cheaper and makes electricity, in most cases, cheaper than other ways of making that electricity. So there's not surprises, or really the risk of surprises of what these what happens when these things have been out there for dozens of years, because we've got these samples of the early early modules. As far as what's what's in the panels themselves, they're they're almost entirely just really protective common materials to protect the delicate solar cells on the inside. So it's a tempered glass front with an aluminum frame, and that's 80 or 85% of the weight is that tempered glass and the aluminum. And then there's several layers of clear plastics above and below those cells, basically a waterproofing material. That's the same material that goes in a windshield, EVA, that keeps the windshield from falling apart if it shatters, keeps all the pieces together gather. Same kind of plastic that's in the solar cells, solar panels. Then you've got the solar cells themselves that are almost entirely pure silicon or silicones refined from sand. And then the little bits of the panel that are I haven't mentioned yet are the metal pieces that conduct electricity around. There's little wires on front that are mostly silver. There's a real thin sheet of aluminum in the back. And then there's tiny copper wires or really flat copper wires between each cell that are coated in tin, and then little solder joints between the cells, and the solder joints are a lead-based solder. So that's the one component that has some toxicity concern is that lead that's in the solder. It's a they're tiny little solders, tiny little wires, not very much lead in the whole whole panel, and it's sealed behind this tempered glass behind these layers of industrial sealants. So there's not a risk of these tiny bits of lead coming out. And in a way, to to prove that is federal regulations require some standard testing on any waste products to determine if they're hazardous or non-hazardous. It's the EPA to find test, and you crush up whatever the thing is into really little pieces and roll it around in some solvents, some acids that simulate kind of a worst-case landfill for what might leach out toxic materials, and then you look and see what leached out. And modern panels pass that test, they're they're non-hazardous, showing that that lead is not at risk of leaching out in any kind of amount that would be considered hazardous. So the panels can go straight into landfill, but that's thinking about it's a very worst-case as far as what happens on the site. There's no risk at all of any lead coming out, anything else coming out, there's nothing there to come out. So there's there's no concern whether they're made in China or or the US. They still have to pass the same UL certifications that's required by National Electrical Code. So there's no concern, but based on where they're where they're manufactured. The other toxicity concern that was raised was was Gen X. There has been real health concerns because of a dump of Gen X that occurred over many years into the Cape Fear from a chemical manufacturing plant south of Fayetteville, not related to solar panels, but there's lots of chemicals in many consumer products that use Gen X and related chemicals in the manufacturing process. Up until this point, it's still an unregulated chemical, and this plant was dumping that into the Cape Fear. And that that raised concern has been determined that's not a safe thing to do, so they've they stopped doing that, now they're trucking it to Texas. But I've seen no evidence that that Gen X is in solar panels. The concern has just been that what if it is in solar panels? But my understanding of those components in the solar panel is there's there is no Gen X there. So I see no chance of any potential health or health or safety risk from that material. And then finally, the entire systems, as well as the the panels themselves, are very durable. They're they're engineered to withstand the wind speed required for any construction in in a given area based on the building code. Even in some extreme case, a tornado that comes through and it knocks over panels and breaks panels, because of those layers of plastics, any piece parts and pieces in glass don't fall apart, they're held together, literally just like a windshield when the the components stay together. So they could just be coming coming and picked up, there's no no health or safety risk from even that worst-case scenario of real extreme weather and damage. I hope that addresses the concerns that have been raised. I can certainly answer additional questions or attempt to.
All right, I know the board, y'all have a lot of questions. I'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Morse.
Okay, are you guys finished with your presentation now, or before I start?
We have we have Richard Kirkland. If there has not been any concerns about property values, he, if you'd like to hear from him, his report is in the in the notebooks, but if there are any concerns about property values, we could have him summarize his report and test to me.
If you wouldn't mind, just go ahead and do y'all's full presentation, whatever y'all have to bring to us, and then we'll go with questions, comments afterwards. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, my name's Rich Kirkland. I'm a state-certified general appraiser. I'm also an MAI through the Appraisal Institute. I'll go quick on this, and you can certainly come back and ask me any questions if I go too quickly. But I've been asked to just address whether or not the proposed solar farm will have an impact on the adjoining property values. I've been looking at that question primarily in North Carolina, but in about 15 other states as well for the last eight years. In that time, I've looked at 615 solar farms. Basically, we're looking around what the mix of adjoining uses are, how close homes are being built to them, we're looking at topography and comparison with that. But primarily, we're looking for sales of property next to an existing solar farm so we can measure to see if there's been any impact on property values. In the report that I've included, I've included referenced 13 different solar farms, from which I found about 20 sales that I was able to do matched pair analysis. Matched pair analysis is really what the Appraisal Institute teaches is that it's very simple, it makes great common sense. You look at a sale of a property next to a solar farm and compare it to a near identical property that's not next to a solar farm that's nearby, so you can measure just that one difference. It's the same type of thing you would do in any type of appraisal where you're saying, well, I've got one house, I want to find out the impact of having a garage on my house. I would look at a house that was has a garage, one that doesn't have a garage that is identical in all other ways, and the difference you measure is the garage. Same thing with a solar farm. So I've listed those in here, but I should mention that I've got about 60 different matched pairs that I've pulled from other areas. These are just the ones that I've put in here, consistently finding that there's really no impact based on that adjacency to the solar farms. I've looked at properties as close as 125 feet, where the home is within 125 feet, the closest solar panel. I've looked at properties where the adjoining topography is much more significant than what is located on this project, as well as flat areas. There's certainly in eastern North Carolina, there's some fairly flat areas. But where I'm finding no impact, we're also seeing that there's going to be some form of either existing trees or a landscape buffer being planted in there to screen or minimize any kind of visual impact. And I do impact analysis for a lot of different things, and when you do measure impact, they're they kind of go in these categories, and you can go in blocks, like the the biggest impact you'd have on property values if you had hazardous material, something that was dangerous to the soil and water. If you have that next door or concerned with that kind of activity, you see pronounced, that's the biggest thing that you would find. Again, as Tommy just went over, there's really nothing associated with a solar farm that would be considered anywhere in that category, so that's really not an issue for solar farms. The next biggest area of impact, I've looked at, say, landfills and wastewater treatment plants, things like that, odor. You can't screen an odor when the wind blows, you know, if you're near a poultry farm, you know it. So there's no odor or any off-gassing related with a solar farm. So again, the second biggest category of potential impact is not an issue with solar farms. And just going down the list, you've got noise. There's really no noise activity that would come off a solar farm. I've never heard anything from the fence line that ever I've I've heard in one solar farm out of all the ones I've looked at where I could hear anything, and it was just a minor hum. And it was a very atypical one, where typically, the inverters that could make that hum are deep inside it, and this one instance, it was right up against the fence line. So there's really no noise issues related to it. Traffic would be the next one, there's no real traffic, the solar farm will have less traffic than one single-family house. So again, traffic is not an issue on that. Coming down stigma, which there's no stigma associated with solar farms, most stigma is really associated with adult establishments, things of that nature. The file, the smallest category where there's an impact, which you can attribute an impact and you would look for would be under appearance, and that's the one area where you can talk about with a solar farm, is the appearance having an impact on property value. Where I've found impacts related to appearance would be things like looking at water towers, billboards, things like that, that are kind of hard to screen, and they were actually in those instances really kind of looming over. We've done impact analysis on cell towers before and things of that nature, and really found nothing with those. But so just being able to see something is not necessarily mean there's negative impact, but that's just what you attribute it to. But again, with solar farms, even though appearance is the one area that, you know, you will hear neighbors often say they don't want to see it, the landscaping screens, the setbacks, and the distance between the homes, the panels are clearly based on the sales status showing no impact on property value and that it's being adequately addressed. So it is my professional opinion that in this project, that there's no no concern for impact on adjoining property values, and that this is a harmonious location for a solar farm. And identifying all the areas around the state of North Carolina, whether I look in the mountains, the Piedmont, or the plains, the adjoining uses are agricultural and residential make up 90-plus percent of the solar farms. If I look at it based on the adjoining acreage, the most common adjoining use is agriculture. And if I look at it based on the number of adjoining parcels, the most common adjoining use is residential. So again, that is my professional opinion that this is also a harmonious location, and that it have no impact on adjoining property values. Be happy to go into detail over any of the matched pairs or any other questions, and I'll answer as best I can.
Commissioner Morse, you want to start?
I'll do it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The actually, before I get into the business, everybody look, you can go ahead and sit down if you want to. Everybody looks really serious here tonight, so I'm gonna tell a story that has nothing to do with solar. The I just can't resist doing this. Dr. Maye back here, he said, y'all called him Mr. Maye, but he's really Dr. Maye. He's a dentist in Walnut Cove that I go to, actually go to his brother, but they both practiced. practiced dentistry in Wallack Cove. Went to the dentist, I guess it'd been a couple of years ago, and went in and did my normal appointment. And yeah, by the way, his brother's an identical twin, so I should have told you that. So the, so I went and had my dental work done, and I noticed, did a couple of little things that were a little different than normal, but I didn't think anything about it and had a conversation with him and everything while I was doing the dental work. And then I went back out to check out, and I think you, you checked me out, I believe. And she said, I apologize that you couldn't see Tex today because he's out or something, but we'll try to make sure we get you back with Tex next time. I was sitting there thinking, I thought I just saw Tex. So that's, that's my story for today, but it's, it kind of blew my mind all the way home, thinking that a different person actually worked on my teeth, that I thought the other person was doing it. Anyway, they are a super good dentist, and I wouldn't go anywhere else.
Could have been that laughing gas he gave to you before he got started.
Yeah, could be, that may have had something to do with it, too. Anyway, I, I talked to the chairman, to the chair today, I've got a lot of information I'm going to cover tonight, and I apologize, I'm going to read some of it, I don't usually read to the audience, but some of it, it's all, a lot of it's pre-prepared, I'm going to read it and get it on the record, so I'm going to post it on my blog. I have a Rick Morris, Rick Morris Commissioner.com website where I do a blog and report on all the activities we do here as commissioners. And so I definitely want to blog this subject. And so I'm going to do a little bit of reading to you, and then probably some that's not reading as well, based on the discussion as it unfolds tonight. Just FYI, for the folks that are from out of town, I assume David told you this, but we're being recorded up there, that's what that little light says. So everything we're doing is recording, and part of the reason I prepared comments ahead of time is so it can all be put on the record and, and for purposes which I'll go into in a few minutes. What I have is an opening statement, a closing statement, and I'm up to 33 questions now, which we'll go through. And if the rest of the board members get worn out or bored or whatever, just holler, I'll stop, you can do yours, and then I'll go back or whatever. But I want to make sure I get through everything that I have, have here in my booklet tonight. The, and my questions are not designed to put anybody on the spot or, or anything, I'm just want, I basically just want to use this session to educate myself further on the solar farms, and also, you know, get information from my constituents, which they'll be able to refer to on our recording and through the blog information. So with that, I'll go ahead and, and read the, read my opening statement, and then I'll start doing some of the questions. Some of them may touch on things that have already been mentioned, but I'm going to go through them all again, and maybe you can elaborate on where it's appropriate to do so. Okay, first of all, on my opening statement, based on information I have received and events that have occurred prior to this meeting, it's my intention to vote in favor of the zoning request that is before us tonight. In making this statement, I'm assuming no new information surfaces that would change my mind. The information in previous events that I'm referring to that support my decision are summarized below. The first one, the surrounding property owners and other residents of the community that are near the proposed solar farm appear to be supportive of the project. The Town of Wallack Cove Board formally approved their piece of the Lit Creek project. The Stokes County Planning Director supports the zoning request and states that it is in compliance with Stokes County's rules and ordinances and zoning regulations. Stokes County Planning Board unanimously with one abstention, however you want to define that, approved the zoning request. And the last of all, the project will provide a positive revenue stream at some level for the county government, along with jobs for local folks who will construct and manage the product, the project. Given my decision at this time to vote in favor of this zoning request, and I would emphasize it's this zoning request only, that does not mean that I don't, I do not have concerns and many questions about solar projects of this scope and how they fit into the unique aspects of Stokes County. I feel this project has triggered a need for this Board of Commissioners to develop a policy that addresses the development of additional solar farms in Stokes County. I will be asking if this policy issue be placed on the discussion agenda for the board's next regular meeting, since until a few weeks ago, we didn't even have a fee schedule for permitting, for the permitting of large-scale solar farms in the county. I would like to use tonight's meeting to ask questions about this project and to use the information gained as part of an effort to develop informed county zoning policy to address future solar farm zoning requests. I would also like to make it clear that if I vote in favor of this zoning request that is before us tonight, I do not consider my vote to be a precedent-setting for future solar farm zoning requests. I would hope that all future requests of this nature will be evaluated based on a new comprehensive zoning policy for solar farms that does not yet exist. I feel we owe it to our constituents who are not directly engaged in this discussion, a policy that protects them from any potential negative effects that might result from the approval of additional large commercial solar farms in the county. As I stated earlier, I also plan to post information gained through our meeting tonight and other follow-on meetings on my blog, and to help educate and communicate with as many residents as possible on this project and future solar projects. At this time, I would like to ask some questions, and yes, no answers are acceptable, or longer answers, if you prefer, would be okay. If none of the folk, participants in the room tonight have an answer for the question, I would ask that a written answer be provided within a reasonable period of time that I can include in the record. And if we have any of those, then I'll just coordinate that through David to whoever they need to go to. And so with that, I'll go ahead and start my questions. I'm going to start with a question that I just wrote, that was not part of my pre, pre, earlier-prepared questions that piqued my interest with Karen, the comment you made. You were talking about the Oversight Utilities Commission and, and their role in, in doing solar farms and approval and so forth. And I found it kind of interesting that you said they were talking about doing a solar farm, if I understood correctly, in Stokes County in 2017? And, and, and my reason for bringing that up is, is kind of interesting, if they were talking about doing this with, in our area in 2017, and then I just found out about it two or three months ago when Wallack Cove started working on theirs. I wonder, I may, maybe, could you explain that process, or if, and, and the real question is, are they talking about doing other solar farms at the Utilities Commission in Stokes County that we're not aware of?
And I can say that I am not aware of any other solar farms in Stokes County that have been proposed, but I may need to defer that question to, to Rex.
That's right.
That's correct. So what typically happens is that before you can get your purchase power agreement with Duke Energy, there's two steps in the process. And typically, you will get your certificate before the Utilities Commission. But then, if you don't get your land use entitlement from the local jurisdiction, it doesn't matter if you have your certificate from the Utilities Commission, because the project cannot be constructed. And so usually, you'll get your CPCN before the Utilities Commission, and as part of that process, you're required to notify the utility here, Duke, Duke Energy Carolinas, and then you also have that publication requirement. And so it has been published on two different occasions in the, the local newspaper. And then, again, you, sometimes you can get your land use approval before you get your certificate from the commission, but usually you get before the Utilities Commission first.
When would the first publication in the local newspaper have been done, based on that 2017 time schedule?
It would have been, and I have the information in my file, but it would have been, and I could provide the specific date, but it would have been in the spring of 2017.
Okay, good. I'd like to research that and just go back and see what paper it was in and what was put in.
Right, and it was most recently published in the local newspaper in August of this year. So further, because we, as I mentioned, we had a revised site plan that's been filed with the commission, because if, if you make any revisions to the site plan that the state agencies review, you have to come back before the commission so that the state agencies can review it again, if you make any revisions.
Okay, so was there a site plan for Stokes County in that first 2017 thing, and then that first newspaper?
That is correct.
Okay, that's really interesting, I want to really.
And, and I can provide you, after the meeting, the, the date, because I have that information, I can provide you the date that it was published in the newspaper in 2017.
Okay, good. If you just shoot that to David, I'd appreciate it, and I'll follow up with him. Alrighty, thank you, that's my new question for the night. Let me get back to my original ones here. Is, first question, is the only contractual relationship for this project between Lit Creek LLC and the individual property owners that are part of the project? Y'all can just answer from back there if you want to, without running back and forth.
Okay, there are several contracts that Lit Creek Solar has.
Ask you just real quick, can we get to the mic, so we have people who are watching live, and also here. Oh yeah, that's right, that's a good point, sorry about that.
My name is Colin Morris, I'm the project manager for the project. Lit Creek Solar LLC has a contract with Duke Energy for the purchase of the, the electricity. Lit Sol, Lit Creek Solar has contracts with the landowners to lease the land. Lit Creek Solar LLC also has a separate contract with Duke Energy for the relationship that governs how the interconnection of the facility with the grid works. Let's see, what else, are there other? There are several contracts that we have to enter into. There are also contracts within the, the companies that are working on behalf of Lit Creek Solar to do the development work, so, you know, several of us work for different companies. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, but there's no kind of contracts in government organizations, it's all really just private.
That's correct.
Contracts to get the project done, right?
That's correct, yes.
That answered my question. Okay, so then a kind of a follow-on to that is the county's only involvement in this project after it's approved would be the enforcement of the zoning regulations and then permitting that's required for, is that correct? Maybe you can answer, too. You can answer.
Long-term monitoring, long after I'm gone, somebody should be looking and making sure buffers are still intact.
Okay. That's, that's normal zoning business, though, doing that. Most, you talked a little bit about this, Karen, are most commercial solar farms done by LLCs? Is so? Why? Besides, I mean, I have an LLC myself, and I didn't get it because I needed a loan, I got it because I didn't want to be sued.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of wondering if, is there more to the answer than just the loans?
No, I think it's pretty much the loan, the financing that, that almost every solar farm, in fact, I can't think of a solar farm that I'm aware of that is not an LLC. And each of the solar farms, they, they, they might have the same parent company, but they each have different LLCs, because the financing is to that specific project, and the, the lenders are only funding that specific project. So they are all separate LLCs.
Okay, let me jump ahead then to another question I have later, and I'll, I'll bring it up now. I was reading about a company called Duke Energy Renewables, I think, and it's, I think it's, they operate like, like some large number, I think, of solar farms. Are they, and they're not an LLC, right, or are they an LLC? Would that be?
So Duke Energy Renewables is an affiliated company of Duke Energy, of Duke Energy Carolinas or Duke Energy Project. And Duke Energy Renewables, they have started more recently in developing renewable energy for Duke Energy. And so that is kind of Duke Energy's renewable arm, where they have recently started developing some solar farms much farther behind the private industry, but the, but Duke Energy Renewables is gotten into the business of developing solar farms.
So they do, they basically do the same thing as Lit Creek's doing?
Correct.
Just them instead of a LLC?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's interesting. Okay. My next question, will Lit Creek LLC own this project for the duration of the project, or will it be sold to new owners? And if it's sold, would the new owners be bound by all of the same terms and conditions of the project's approval, both from us and from Wallack Cove?
The short answer is, I, none of us know for sure whether it'll be sold, but it's certainly a possibility. Lots of solar farms are being, are assets that are transferred, so it's, it's common for solar farms to be bought. In fact, Duke Energy Renewables, they develop some solar and some wind and other types of projects, but mostly they buy them. So most of the assets that they own have been purchased from companies like Lit Creek Solar. When, when a transaction like that happens, all of the contractual obligations that have been, that bind Lit Creek Solar or any of these other solar companies flow with the project. And as I think Karen mentioned before, with respect to zoning, zoning is tied to the land, so it doesn't matter who owns the facility, they have to meet all of the requirements of the county. But in general, all of those contracts flow with the project, because the project entity, that Lit Creek Solar entity, is the owner of those contracts. And so usually, the entity is just purchased, and so Lit Creek Solar is still bound by those contracts, it's just that Lit Creek Solar is owned by someone else.
Theoretically, this solar farm could end up being owned by the same company that gives our traditional power, right? If, down the road, theoretically?
Yes. In theory, yes, and in, in practice, even more so, yes. I think that there's a decent chance that Duke Energy, the parent company, will buy lots of these solar farms that are being built in North Carolina and South Carolina and other places. They're actively acquiring assets.
Okay, great, thanks, that, that answers the question. Is Lit, is Lit Creek Solar LLC bonded for this project to protect landowners and the county against any failure to comply with the agreements such as the decommissioning plan? And if they're bonded, what level of bonding would they, would they have?
I'm not aware of any bonding related to decommissioning, however, there are several performance guarantees that if, that are a part of the power purchase, well, there is a performance guarantee associated with the power purchase agreement that carries hefty penalties if the, the solar farm doesn't produce as much electricity as, as been estimated. Part of the, the sort of process of working with the utility to get a power purchase agreement involves basically the solar entity committing to Duke that there will be, over the life of the project, enough output for Duke to be able to essentially count on, you know, that much electricity, because Duke, as, as was mentioned before, is bound to supply a certain amount of renewable energy by law. And so they look to solar companies to procure that required amount of electricity, and if they don't get it, then they ensure that the, the company who owns the facility pays them, basically makes them whole for that, that off, you know, offsetting or that gap. So there are several sort of financial penalties involved with not performing, but there's none currently in place specifically related to the decommissioning.
Decommissioning or other agreements with, like, local folks that are involved with?
Nothing, nothing that has a bond associated with it.
Okay, so the, so the performance guarantee is, is between two private, well, between utilities company and LLC, just to ensure they get the amount of power they were promised or whatever.
That's correct.
Well, what would cause them not to get the power? If the, if the thing is engineered and sized properly and all of that?
That's, that's the key.
A lot of bad weather or something, or?
No, mostly it's about Duke ensuring that the, the people that they do business with are capable of building what they say they're going to build. So in theory, a company could be just really bad at what they're. So in theory, a company could be just really bad at what they're doing, put together a solar farm that is poorly engineered or built and doesn't perform.
Oh, okay. Okay.
But that is not typical in North Carolina because it's, the, they're, the, the solar developers that enter into purchase power agreements, it's, it's a fairly long and extensive process. And so they do have the performance guarantees, but it is not, it is a very infrequent occurrence that the output is not delivered as it's supposed to be. So it's usually, basically, if you, if you have the acreage and, that you need to provide the output, then you should be able to provide the output that you're required to in the PPA.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. Let me switch over a little bit to the revenue, to the revenue portion of this for the county. Let me see. What Richard gave us, our tax administrator, is, I'll find it here. He gave us a little statement, and then he gave us this chart. The chart shows, it shows, and David, you can help me with this if I've got it wrong, but this shows what revenue is produced by the one that's already in Wal-Mart Cove, right, on Baller Road.
It's a much smaller facility, I think, for like four make a one compared to...
Yeah. So what he did was, and he basically said, what we ended up with, we're going to get some deferred firmment from a rollback, which, for however much that would be, and then we're going to get like $200 or $300 an acre increased. That's what he said, basically, based on that little farm. And we, can he or can you guys give us some kind of a projection about what our total revenue is going to be from a farm like this one that we're approving versus the little one here? I mean, is there a direct linear relationship or whatever? Because I'd like to, you know, one thing I'd like to do when talking about this to people is be able to give them some decent numbers about what tax revenue and so forth that's going to produce and plus any jobs or anything else.
Yeah, we can look into it and provide that information to Mr. Satterworth later.
If you just scale it up, just scale it up from this thing, then that would be good.
Okay.
You do that, you said?
I think that folks with me can do it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, just so, so you understand, in sort of modeling these projects to figure out the financial viability of it, we have to make assumptions and about how much property tax the facility is going to have to pay. And so, and it's really not an assumption because the millage rates, you know, the county or the city charges are all available. So we don't have it here tonight, as far as I know, but that's something that we have built into this process anyway, and we should have thought to provide it, but we could.
Okay, good. Yeah, if we just get that, that would be very helpful.
Mr. Morse?
Uh-huh.
Our county manager here, US Bureau head of our tax department, is, yes, around approximately 120,000.
Okay. 120,000 what revenue? Or what, per month, year?
300 per acre times 400 in actual panels for Stokes County. That'd be Stokes County only. The city of Wal-Mart Cove will be their own revenue. We do collect one, but it'll be their own. Now then, you will always have, you will also have, for us remaining, staying in the deferment side of it, so that is no increase or decrease. But you will also have...
But the land that doesn't have panels on it?
Yes, sir.
That property will be zoned, and I talked to Richard about that, so that the result is for 616 plus or minus acres. Richard did say that sometimes that land can be, still fall under the exemption, but they have to qualify at that point.
They would have to qualify, yes. They would, they'd qualify through pasture land or timber, whatever they go on, but that would be on the, what was not under the panels. Now the panels are assessed at 20% value based on an exemption through federal government and state.
I'm aware of that. I know about that. But I'd just like to know what all that adds up to in dollars, if we can make a decent rough order of magnitude estimate.
And I just wanted to point out, you shouldn't just look at just the 400 acres that's only in the county because the county, it's tax, you know, you'd be still taxing everything that's in Wal-Mart Cove as well.
Yeah, we share, we share the tax.
So it should be the whole 1,100 because Wal-Mart Cove gets a share, but the county gets their share every time.
Yeah.
So just want to make sure we weren't looking at just the 400 acres.
Okay, good. The, I went through this whole packet in pretty good detail. This, this information you guys provided on the, it's from the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association. That's the, you know, that is the weakest part of this package, in my opinion. When I started looking at these charts, you know, that, I mean, I've done my share of chartsmanship, but if it's me, I wouldn't even put this in there, or at least I'd retool it or something because, first of all, on page three, it's got this, these bar charts with that teeny little bar of how much we were getting and this big old bar of how much we're going to get. And the problem with that is that when you get all the way up to that big old bar, you know, only $700,000. And so to me, the chart is kind of, kind of misleading, and it caused me to really start to doubt some of the other things I was reading. $700,000 is chicken feed when it comes to running these local governments. And then, and then it gets worse as they start using percentages. Talking about this 2,000% increase, and then you get over to Stokes County, I'm sure on page seven, and it's talking about the little solar farm, I guess, that we just talked about, a 6,993% increase in revenue. Well, that adds up to a big old $12,000. So my unsolicited advice is that, that hurts the credibility of the package, putting stuff like in there, whether you guys did it or somebody else. But anyway, back to my questions. Oh, well, the revenue stream, well, the revenue stream we're talking about here, whatever it turns out to be, will that revenue stream increase or decrease or stay the same over this 25 or 30-year period, roughly? I mean, like, is there depreciation or do the things get, lose value or how does that all work with, with the revenue stream?
The taxes that are paid for the, for the equipment itself will be based upon the value of the equipment, and the value of the equipment does go down over time as depreciation is applied. So that portion will go down. The property taxes, that depends on, you know, how the county chooses to assess, you know, that land and that use on that land. So I think, I don't know about that. Generally, those go up over time, I think.
If you guys know, does that 80%, 20% thing, is that likely to stay at those levels or is it likely to go?
That's a state law. It's not a federal law. It's a state law. And so there have been several instances since 2007 when that was put in place where people in the legislature have, have at least discussed repealing that or changing the level. I don't think there's...
Where, where we get more?
Right, where they, where they take that tax abatement away, or they, or they reduce the abatement so that at some level, some value, less than 80% of abatement.
Okay.
But I don't know whether there's any kind of current discussion in the, in the administration right now about it.
Right, and my understanding, there's no current discussion about it, but it has been discussed over the past several years from time to time, but I don't think there's any current action to change it.
If we want to change it, we should take some action ourselves, maybe, with our legislators. Okay, next question is, will, what type and levels, what type and what levels of insurance do you guys carry? Will the Lit Creek LLC carry on a project like this?
So we have...
I'm assuming it's insured to whatever, but...
Yeah, so there are a couple of different places where we are required to have insurance. The least that we have is a landowner has a minimum liability insurance level. I don't want to refer explicitly to the number that's in there. But there is also, there's a, the, the facility is insured for its full value...
Okay.
As part of the requirement to secure the financing for it. So, you know, effectively, we have to get a loan from a bank to, to have the money to construct it. It's like any other kind of infrastructure. You, you know, you get the financing and then the revenue generated from the facility pays down the loan. And so you have to have insurance to get the loan. You also have to have title insurance for any land that's leased. And so that title insurance relates to the value of the equipment as well and the, the potential loss of, of being able to realize the revenue stream due to some kind of title issue, some undercoming claim that Mr. May doesn't own the land. And so there's, there's title insurance that is required also.
And then the liability is just kind of normal liability that you would have on anything, right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
First of all, just to, I guess, to point out also that the companies that do the actual construction work, all of the, you know, contractors and everyone that's involved in the construction, obviously, are licensed and insured. Then the, the firm that will do the long-term operation and maintenance of the facility also will have to be, have, carry liability insurance so that anyone who's ever on the property physically is covered.
Okay, okay, good. Is Lit Creek Solar or the landowner ultimately responsible for the reclamation of the land when a solar farm is gone?
So Lit Creek Solar is bound by the contract with the landowner and also by this board because of the condition that there be a decommissioning plan placed on the, as a condition of the approval. So the owner of the solar farm has to be, is responsible for doing the decommission.
Okay.
And I believe the state law that's being discussed will specifically tie that obligation to the owner of the facility also.
Right, that's, that's correct. The, the proposed state law would require the solar company to be responsible for the decommissioning, which makes sense because you, you can't expect, they're the ones that have the expertise with knowing how to do so, and you can't expect the individual property owners to have the expertise to be able to do so.
Okay, what's the timing of the statute that you're talking about you referred to a couple of times?
It is currently before the General Assembly.
For this budget that's going on?
Correct. I'm sorry.
2022 is the statute that they have their commission and have something in place.
I'm sorry, it, excuse me. It just passed.
Is it the 15 panel, a 15-member panel thing for decommissioning and the law are the same thing?
Right.
Oh, I thought they were two separate things.
Correct.
The panels, the panels been placed to get the law in place by 2022. Is that correct?
The law has been passed directing that commission to adopt regulations about decommissioning.
Okay, okay, good.
Do you have that in your agenda package? I highlighted the Arab shows where it states, basically, they got to get the commission to get like a correct statement.
Yeah. She was just referring to a statute, and I thought it was something different than what we were talking about.
They haven't adopted the plan yet, but in 2022, they're obligated by that statute to have something available. But I think renewables, their submission by the applicant is the decommissioning plan until the state might accept that, override it or, you know, modify it in some form, the way I understand it, part of the conditions.
I got a question on that later, so I'll just... Is, is there a pond or a lake on the property that's being, that's...
Mr. May's property down Farm Road, there's a pond, that would be considered like a wet one there.
Is it, is it going to stay in place? It's not going to get, it stay in place with the solar farmers? It get drained?
No, we're not going to touch any of the wet areas.
Okay. So the pond just stays intact as it is? Okay, good.
Kind of green, yeah.
Whenever this, and I got a, probably a question before this, whenever you put these things in, do you plow the ground up and put a cable in from each solar panel that goes and runs in and carries electricity out to wherever it's going?
So generally speaking, the way that these work is, the panels themselves are wired together in, in series or in parallel into what are called strings. Those strings are combined at the ends of the rows into a box, and essentially, there's a collection of smaller gauge cables into larger gauge cables. The, the larger gauge cables are trenched into the ground, and then they, they come up out of the ground into the inverter and then the transformer. And then the, essentially from, there are several inverter transformer pads that are placed around the facility, and from each of those, there's trenching that collects all of those larger cables to the point of interconnection where there's a final transformer that steps up the voltage from the voltage that, you know, the power is circulated within the facility to the voltage of the transmission system.
Okay, so every cable in there is, is trenched in? Nothing's on top of the ground?
Well, there are, in the panel tables, the racking, the, the panels are wired together above ground because they're mounted on the...
Okay.
They're under, if they got an inspector, if it's an electrical inspector, there's a minimal depth, they'll have to bury this underground, anything, there's not anything over there.
Okay, good. That, well, that leads to my real question then. When you disturb the soil under this thing, and by digging these trenches and so forth, and then you decommission it, does that render that soil no longer usable for septic systems?
No, because all, all of the underground cable is pulled up out of the ground.
Yeah, but, but the rules on septic are that if the soil is disturbed, you can't use it.
And that's some of the poorest soils in the county for septic. That was, I think we discussed this, one of the reasons.
I know that, but I mean, I mean, it's disturbed soil.
The soil depth should be at least 36 inches. I'm talking about environmental health stuff now, but that's...
I know, I am too.
You know, there's, there's other types of systems, but just trenching on the surface should not cause an issue for, for septic. I mean, I'll find that...
We need to find out because I've been on septic projects where if somebody brought a truckload of dirt in and put it two inches deep on top of the ground, no septic system. You, you remember that one, right?
Well...
I mean, then, and then if you disturb the ground, normally the septic folks say, if this ground's been disturbed...
But the field for, you know, corn, tobacco, a lot of those have turned into septic systems, right around. Because you're looking at soil depths lower than just, I mean, most electrical cables at least 18 inches, I'd, you know, would have to see what the plan is, but you're looking at soil depths three foot or more, so high for a septic system.
Okay.
Brandon would be the one that...
Yeah. Just get, just answer that question later then. But I'm just curious because...
I think maybe one way to think about that is, a lot of the cropland in, in North Carolina that's, that has been, has been repurposed, has been repurposed for residential subdivisions. And as Mr. Sutter just mentioned, those fields have been plowed for years and years and years, and now there are housing developments there.
No, I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm just used to dealing with environmental health. If you deal with them, they can be pretty strict about these things. And I'm just curious if it was going, if the land's going to be okay from that aspect so that at least the property owners know if it's not, so...
Still, underlying soil quality and type will have more to do with it.
I know that has more to do with it, but the, but these guys will nitpick you on disturbed soil, you know? I've seen it done many times. That was raised for my question. Mainly so everybody else will know the answer to it, especially the people that own the Kirkland appraisal, Kirkland appraisal basically just says that, that the surrounding property owners have nothing to worry about as far as property values. I mean, that's kind of the way I interpret what you said. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do you have to be, do you have to be a special kind of appraiser to do the kind appraisal work you do? Like, for instance, if I hired a guy in King that's an appraiser over there and he come and did, would he come up with the same thing, information you did, you think?
I can't tell you what another appraiser's going to come up with. I can tell you that this is the right methodology, and again, I cite the, the sources where this is the right methodology.
Yeah, wore me out reading all that, so...
Yeah, I apologize. It's not, it's not fun reading or exciting reading, but I can say that this has been, but this, I've done this type of analysis across state. I think I've looked at probably 400 or more in North Carolina. It's been peer reviewed by multiple MAIs. When I go to other states, I work with local MAIs in other states. So the methodology and the stuff, it has all been peer reviewed.
Do you make that projection or that decision, and then do you go back like five years later and see if it actually panned out?
Well, what I'm doing is, essentially, right now, I'm going back through, you know, all 600 of these. I go back when I, when I can, and we just started the process again, starting back over. We're just updating. We're just looking at all the old data so we can find more matched pairs. We're just updating, we're just looking at all the old data so I can find more matched pairs.
Okay, okay, good, I got another question for you then. Okay, we have a park here called Hanging Rock State Park. I don't know if you guys have been to it, has Moore's Knob in it, which is up really high and then Hanging Rock, which is almost as high. And you can see long distances from up there and that's, that's part of the attraction of the park, is the views from up there. So from your experience with an appraisal company, I said like Kirkland, I didn't know you was gonna be here, so. But from your experience, would you consider a large solar farm that could be viewed from Moore's Knob or Hanging Rock up in the state park to be in harmony with the park and the surrounding parcels and land area? And that's a general kind of question, but basically, if you say, if I'm on Moore's Knob and I look down and see giant solar fields, is your appraisal methodology gonna be the same for that as it is for what we're doing here?
I've done, I've done that type of analysis actually in Napa Valley. Looking at, on the mountains, looking out across where a projected solar farm is gonna be in the valley. And the concerns were, what is it gonna do to this expensive view that these folks have? But when I did that, what I did is I looked at, well, how many acres are gonna be involved versus how many acres you can see from, say, up there on the knob? And, you know, I would, I would look to see how much can they see and then how many acres of solar panels are worth? So you can start talking about what percentage of the view are you talking about? Because for some of that same view, there's lots of things you can see. And distant views of solar, solar panels are, I mean, I think one of the property owners spoke about, you know, from up high, it looks like a lake. And from a distance, solar fields do, they look like a solid sheet of blue and it's only when you get up close that you can see that that's not all that's there. So I wouldn't see any problem.
I doubt that would satisfy me, but that's, that's your opinion.
Orientation to have the panels, directionals, without doing scenic business stuff. I can tell you the most reflective thing up here is those forty-some warehouses at Brookport. And from flying, I can see them when I take off from Wilkesboro, you can see them as soon as you get about three thousand feet up at the sunshine. Good directional beacon.
And again, I'm specific from that knob, I have to see how close and whether or not you see much of this property from there.
Right now, we go to the park in our zoning process, even if we put a cell tower close to them and get their opinion on whether it's okay or not, so. I suspect I'm personally gonna have issues if I have to look at cell panels from Moore's Knob, but that's down the road, maybe something we won't have to address. Is there any type of environmental impact study required prior to constructing the Lit Creek project like the ones you would do maybe for a new golf course or something?
There are a couple different, Karen mentioned earlier that the state clearinghouse reviews all applications for solar farms. The state clearinghouse is a collection of state agencies, the environmental, North Carolina Environmental DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, the Fish and Wildlife Service, Department of Transportation, Department of Public Health, the Cultural Resources Department. All of those agencies look at our application and they look specifically with regard to what they care about, right? So are there culturally sensitive resources that may be impacted on this, in this area? And so all of those agencies, as Karen mentioned, have done their review and have said that this is okay from their perspective. In addition, the, much like needing title insurance, needing other types of insurance, the investors in these facilities require a phase-one environmental study, ESA, environmental system.
That's really what I was asking about, is a phase-one, phase-two process the same as we do for other things? That's required?
We've done a wetland delineation and a jurisdictional determination by the Army Corps of Engineers. And we've done what's called a NEPA review, which is.
I know what that is, that's good. Unless you want to explain to everybody else. Okay, good, that answered my question. I just wasn't sure if you had to do that traditional stuff or there may be some exception for, for solar farms. Let me keep going, Mr. Chair, y'all warm? Y'all, I'm good, I'm half done. What a question.
We're good, about five-minute break.
Five-minute break, huh?
Yeah, I'm good.
That's good.
We'll just take a five-minute recess and we'll try to start back up at nine o'clock. You gonna join us? Okay, if you see one for you.
Thank you.
Call the meeting back to order. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to Commissioner Yance real quick and let him ask a few questions.
So fortunately for you, I don't have thirty-two questions. Start with that. Several of my questions have been answered and I appreciate that, Commissioner Morris. But a couple of the questions that I want to piggyback on, so depreciation was brought up and depreciation schedule. So which, do you use a five-year schedule depreciation values as far as the equipment that's on the property? Do you use the MACRS model for depreciation?
I don't know the answer. That's like a tax question and we have tax people who, you know, do the tax planning and sort of the financial modeling, but I can get the answer for you.
Okay.
I believe it's a straight-line depreciation over the life of the equipment.
Right.
So it's not makers, it's not a five-year accelerated depreciation. I think it's straight-line for whatever the useful life, thirty years, twenty-five years.
I think it's a straight line. I was thinking it was either seventeen or twenty years. I'm not certain either, but I think that's right.
Okay. All right. And then my next question is, you know, we talk about a lot of good things in job creation and that always intrigues me when I hear job creation in Stokes County, I mean. But we just talked about job fairs. Is there a commitment to hire X amount of employees during the construction process of this? I heard you say earlier that the contractors will be bonded and insured, so I'm assuming this isn't your first round with this. You guys probably use certain contractors. Those contractors commit to hiring workforce from within Stokes County to meet a certain level. You know, a job fair sounds good, but it just sounds good. It's flashy and it does nothing for us.
It doesn't necessarily commit us to anything other than asking the community, are you interested and do you have folks here who can do the job? That's what we're committing to do because these are trades that have, you know, at least some of the jobs require certain trades or expertise and so you gotta go find the people who can do the job. I personally don't know whether the likelihood that there are folks here in the community in Stokes County who are qualified, but I suspect that there are lots of, sort of the, some of the construction work is relatively unskilled labor and so I wouldn't imagine there's a problem, assuming that there are people in the community who want the jobs for finding people here to do that work. But I think it'd be difficult to commit to a certain number because I just don't know enough, I personally don't know enough about what kind of skills or expertise are required, you know. And again, like, we, it's very common for people to say, well, what about the maintenance? Like, how about if, landowners commonly say, you know, I've got a tractor, I'd like to mow the grass, I've been mowing this grass for thirty years anyway, how about you pay me to do it? That can happen and it has happened in some cases, but it kinda usually gets back to that requirement, the bonding and ensuring. So it's rare that, you know, an individual wants to go through the process of becoming qualified or insured to a level sufficient enough to be able to do it. So I hear you about the jobs. I think we can commit to having job fairs and making sure that people in the community have access and are, you know, notified that the job fair is gonna happen and then just kinda see, hopefully there are people who, you know, work out.
But as far as the level of commitment to X amount of employees, that's not something that's...
I don't think we can do that. I can ask about whether we can make some sort of commitment to a number, but right now I couldn't say what that number would be.
Right. And I wouldn't expect you to, but if something, if you guys could research, I would appreciate it. So the last thing, or actually two other questions, but one, when we talk about Gen X and whether it is or isn't in the panels, I certainly would like a comprehensive study to say yes or no, because in my research, which is limited, I'm not a chemical engineer by any means, don't claim to be, but that Gen X is actually not a product, it's a process. It creates two different compounds that are used in Teflon, which is used in everything these days. So the Teflon that is in the coating around the cells, or the film rather, has Teflon coating in it, so therefore it would have those two components, possibly. Now, I'm not saying that it does or it doesn't, but I would like to have a comprehensive study to say yes or no to that. And then my second part is, is it uncommon to ask for site soil samples on a bi-annual or a five-year plan or something so that we know if there is or isn't contamination prior to the situation that we, many of us in the room know about with the coal ash ponds, so?
So I'll address the second question first and then Tommy, you can talk about Gen X. It's not common for boards or people to ask for soil samples, in my experience. I don't know that that's unreasonable to ask for, but in my experience, requests like that are often difficult to manage over time because it's unclear sort of who bears the responsibility of doing the sampling, doing the analysis, presenting the results. And so I think that that might be something that the county may want to consider. As you pointed out, Commissioner Morris, you pointed out that you would like to form a policy around permitting solar in the county. Maybe that's something that could be explored as one of the requirements, because I would, if that condition were imposed upon us, I'd wanna have it very clear as to how it's done, you know? What kind of results would you accept? What levels of, you know, material would you consider to be, you know, below a threshold that's acceptable? You know, are there state sort of standards for every kind of chemical that, you know, might be found in soil? So, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, and only to be fair with both parties, you would want a bench line to, you'd wanna go in and do it.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think that that's an unreasonable request. There's some cost associated with that and so that's also a consideration.
Okay.
I can attempt to address the Gen X a little more. You're correct about referring to it as a process. My understanding is it's used, DuPont uses it both ways, to refer to the process and to refer to the primary chemical that's in that process. Yeah, Teflon has been proposed to be in solar panels. I haven't seen that it actually is. The evidence that I, so I've seen proposed by some solar opponents to say Teflon's in solar. It was something from DuPont from 2006 saying you could use this Teflon sheet instead of glass in a panel, but every panel today has a tempered glass front and not a Teflon front. Those ceilings are encapsulants inside. I know those are not Teflon, those are EVA. I don't believe there is Teflon in them, but I don't have proof of you, proof today to say there's...
And I guess that's one of my big concerns is to come in and you don't have proof that it's not there. That's my big concern, because you've heard, I've got constituents in the community and that's a concern of theirs, and it's certainly all over, if you Google these things, it's everywhere. I mean, anything that you want about Gen X and the process and the potential of them being in solar panels. So to prove otherwise, it seems like someone as lucrative as this obviously is, would prove out pretty quickly that it is or isn't there.
Yeah, I've seen interviews with the panel, module manufacturers saying it's not there, for what that's worth, but that's what I've read in interviews.
Right. And that's certainly for me, a definitive one-way, you know, an up or down.
Who would you want to see that evidence from? Like, who would be...
Well, I would want some scientific evidence behind it. I mean, not to fault what you said, but you said that you can't definitively say that it is or isn't. You're really kind of unsure if it's there or isn't there, so.
Yeah, all right, I can't definitively say. I can say I do know a lot about the manufacturing and I don't believe it's there.
Right.
But I can't promise you it's never in one, but I have no reason to believe that it is. I do know that it's common in a lot of consumer products. I mean, Teflon, hands, clothing, you know, it's something that we are consuming certainly.
It's certainly still to be debated on the effects and such, but, all right, that's all I have right now. Thank you, Commissioner Yance.
Commissioner Minho, would you rather go and move it back to you?
Sure. Because I won't take about five minutes, really. I'm not gonna sit here and ask a lot of questions. I'm gonna review three or four things that we have, that we cover at every planning meeting, that David has come, this is my, ending my third year on the board, and we've had several projects brought to us by David. Every project has its own unique circumstances, but the stewardess is always used, and that is, if you make that motion, David expects the words consistent and reasonable to be in that motion. And that goes with the 2035 comprehensive plan. I look at what David gave us, it says his proposed amendment is consistent with the Stokes County 2035 comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, that's one thing. And then he has a paragraph at the end that says his proposed amendment is reasonable and in public interest in that. The property is currently zoned RA residential agriculture and is being proposed to be rezoned to an M1CZ light manufacturing conditional zoning district. This property is located in an area with limited residential development, large tracts of vacant land. Proposed parcels have limited development options due to the lack of public services. Placement of a utility scale for a voltage facility with adequate buffers and safeguards in this area seems to be a reasonable request. That's one thing that we have to cover every meeting we have with David and the planning board's recommendation. Planning board has brought us a recommendation of eight yays, no nays, and one abstention. We've talked about buffer zones, we've talked about revenue, we've talked about a job fair with no guarantee of the jobs being from our county. Possibly a hundred and seventy-five jobs, I think was the number put down, but there's no guarantee of how many of that hundred and seventy-five will come. Two people in our county, might be a hundred and seventy-four, might be one, I don't know off the top of my head. And I guess the last thing is, is I know this area very well. My wife lived on Fallow Road before we were married, and all of you know where Fallow Road is, and so therefore I'm very familiar with this situation. I have known Texan Tim, Johnny Parsons, and Webby Smith, all the people on Old Town Road, Farmer Road in that area for a long time, seems to be very comfortable with the situation. I do wanna ask, I said I wasn't gonna ask any, but one question is, I just wanna make sure. Commissioner Yance brought up the Teflon deal, and that being a very important thing to the constituents of Stokes County. I'm looking at, is there any way that if anything were to occur that caused a bad situation, where are we looking at final liability situation on this? Who is ultimately, let's say something happened in a negative way, who's liable?
responsible.
Is the owner's liable, is Lake Creek liable, or is the board of commissioners liable?
Lake Creek.
Lake Creek would be ultimately responsible. Board of county commissioners would not have any, you tell me that we wouldn't have any responsibility in this? No liability? That's my last question, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Minho. Commissioner Morris, I'll let you finish.
I'll continue right quick. I got a follow-up question and I'll skip ahead to the two that were just mentioned by the other commissioners about these panels and what the makeup is. I come from a program management background and we did a lot of business using certifications of, for parts and so forth. And then you guys might get back to us on this, but would you, would Lake Creek LLC have a problem, say, on the panels, on the solar panels doing a cert, assert as to what they are made up of, what the material composition of the panels are, once that decision's made? I don't think it's been made yet, like, from what you, from your information, but, you know, and the way the cert process works is you certify it and I accept it and then, of course, could go later and pull a sample and check it if I wanted to, possibly, but... Would a written cert of the material composition be a reasonable thing? Somebody must know what's in them, I mean, if they could do that.
The manufacturer provides a specification, there's a standard term for the, I can't remember what it's called.
MSDS?
Yeah, I think that's right. MSDS is essentially a list of all of the, the material that make up a product, and so we certainly can provide that. That's...
It's a waterfall effect, you know? The certs start at the bottom and then somebody certifies the whole product itself.
Oh, I see, you still might certify, well, I don't know.
And you, I mean, you refer to their certs. I mean, everybody's enforcing everybody's certs.
I mean, the premier was that in the solar industry, that kind of cert on the materials.
I'm just talking about it, I've used it.
All of the equipment that we use is UL certified, so the panels are UL certified, the transformers, the inverters, all of the wiring, everything. And so there is a certification process that all of the equipment undergoes.
We just need a certification of what's in the panel so we know what's sitting on our land. I mean, that's what everybody's kinda asking for, I think. So if you guys just think about how you might do that and use it multiple certs as the thing gets built up or however you would do that.
Okay.
Maybe give back to us on that, possibly. I'm gonna try to go quicker here. Big concerns about, and I know what the information says about herbicide and chemical runoff issues. This thing's right close to Townport Creek, which is a major, major waterway in the county. Can you, I mean, can we be assured and you guarantee that we're not gonna have herbicide? I saw in the information you provided, you're gonna use Roundup, you use that term specifically, and so Roundup's under a lawsuit right now for whatever, I predict cancer or something, but can you guys, can you guys make us comfortable that we're not gonna have runoff and herbicides?
I believe we can make it comfortable. All, any kind of herbicides or chemical mowing that is done is applied by licensed and regulated applicators. So anyone who has access to those commercial products has to be trained and licensed to apply it. And so we use vendors, much like many, if not most agricultural fields or farms, apply commercially available products. So too do we, the solar farm and the operations and maintenance companies who do the mowing. There's limited spraying of herbicides used. It's really in places where it's just difficult to get a lawnmower, but to the extent that it is used, it's all, it's always applied based on whatever the state regulatory process is for licensing those applicators.
Some of these things you don't have to have a license to do, but if you're gonna use licensed people, that gives me a better comfort level.
Yes, absolutely. And I think the chemicals that we're talking about to be used in a commercial setting do have to be licensed, so maybe...
Could you verify that? Would you verify that?
I can, I can commit to you that the application of these materials, any kind of pesticides or herbicides that are used, will be done by someone who is licensed by the state.
Okay, okay. On the runoff, and this has been addressed and everything, when you have buildings and parking lots and flat surfaces, you have runoff. We've got little flat surfaces here, hundreds of thousands of them, and we say there's no concern about runoff. So I would just like to hear from you guys that you can kind of tell us that there's not gonna affect the Townport Creek and to surrounding properties and so forth with runoff of additional water and velocity of water based on unusually heavy rainstorms and that sort of thing. It will, you know, that could affect the surrounding area.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Corey Howell. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer here in the state of North Carolina and I'm the civil engineer working on this project, excuse me. And, apologize, I have a bit of, a bit under the weather, so I may have to clear my throat a few times.
No sweat, no sweat.
To answer your question, Commissioner, you know, this project will be designed to follow all North Carolina DEQ commission requirements and with that, as part of, you know, the big, you know, the main thing there is during construction, you know, there will be land disturbance across the site as part of installing these panels, and so just like any other commercial or industrial project that is done, you know, where land is disturbed here in North Carolina, you know, all of those requirements will be followed from an erosion control standpoint. The entire site will be designed such that detailed delineation will be done on every drainage area across the site, and then sedimentation basins will be designed per North Carolina DEQ requirements to manage that runoff during construction. And so, you know, just, just like every other industrial or commercial or residential large-scale project.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think you addressed the floodplain issue, I think Karen maybe did or somebody did at the beginning. You're basically, there's, there's a hundred-year stuff in there and nothing's gonna be built in the hundred-year part, right?
Their plan is to avoid, you're either in or out of the floodplain, but their plan is, and their final plan will show that, or my recommendation to get the final site plan. Again, this project is, if approved, wouldn't happen next week, it's a drawn-out process that they may address later on, but no, they would not be, and I'm the floodplain manager of the county also, so.
I'll wear that.
I would be looking at that too, and the water shit, there's no water shit to deal with on this.
Okay, my next question, should people in proximity of the solar farm do any baseline testing of their wells or ponds to have this data available for comparison purposes down the road? Do, I mean, has that occurred anywhere? Anybody have that thought, or?
In all of the solar farms that I've been involved with, that's never been something that's been requested.
Okay. If we measure that, that's one reason I asked about the pond. You could measure the pond and then measure it later. That'd be a quick, easy way, wouldn't it?
Well, I mean, we don't have local expertise to do or even monitor, I don't think, some of the stuff you're talking about, but the state would, and that's where we defer, like, erosion control issues.
I'm just saying about water quality, you know? That's a big issue around here with everybody on everything.
The pond itself could be, but the pond's green when I went by today to check on stuff. I mean, I don't know what the quality is now. That you'd have to have a baseline to work on.
That's why I'm saying, I'd measure it now if I had a well, I might. If I lived beside it, I'd probably just do baseline on my well, but I'm not saying that's something that needs to be done.
The 27 tank and a well in the county regulations, it's a hundred-foot separation in a septic system and a water source well. To the best of my knowledge, and I can defer based on fifty-foot setbacks and in some cases further, and the buffers, you're gonna be much farther than that hundred-foot from any water, you know, drinking water, although waffle first, I'm sure we can do that. You know, like I said, I'm not sure I even test that other than doing test wells like you do for petroleum-based problems with gas tanks and around storage tanks.
That's what I was thinking of. Okay, next question. Do you, you guys said these have lead in them, don't they? The panels do have some lead in them.
Yes, I'm telling you about them.
Okay, okay, good. I read the rest of the material about that. You guys have any lessons learned, either positive or negative, from solar farm projects that you've been involved with in the past?
Yeah, I've got a lot of lessons that I've learned, so I don't know exactly what you, what kind of answer you're looking for specifically.
I'm looking at, a lot of my, a lot of my questions here are geared toward developing a policy for following on solar farms, so.
So I think with respect to thinking ahead in the future about how you wanna regulate this activity in the county, there are a few things that, you know, several of us have participated over the years in helping counties to sort of better arm themselves with information so that, you know, you can ask intelligent questions and really protect your constituents. One, I think, is to have a decommissioning requirement, you know, put that in your ordinance so that not only does the solar farm commit to the landowner, but the solar farm commits to the county that, you know, some type of decommissioning is required. I think that there are lots of sort of best practices related to developing solar, you know, adhering to, obviously, you know, adhering to the ordinance is a given, but, you know, giving consideration to view sheds and buffering, trying your, you know, your very best to screen these facilities from view. In my experience, most opposition to solar is, is related to, as Mr. Kirkland pointed out, to the view. People generally support solar as long as they don't have to, you know, look at it. And so I would suggest, you know, considering that, if you're going to, you know, define... of the stuff you're talking about. But the state would, and that's where we defer, like erosion control issues, um.
I'm just saying about water quality, you know? That's a big issue around here with everybody on everything.
The pond itself could be, but the pond's green. When I went by today to check on the stuff, I mean, I don't know what the quality is now. Uh, that, you'd have to have a baseline to work on.
That's why I'm saying that's, I'd measure it now if, if I had a well. I might, I'll, if I lived beside it, I'd probably just do baseline on my well. But that's, I'm not saying that's something that needs to be done.
The 27 tank and a well and the county regulations, it's a hundred-foot separation in a, a septic system and a water source well. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, and I tend to defer based on fifty-foot setbacks, and in some cases further, and the buffers, you're gonna be much farther than, um, that hundred foot from any, uh, water, you know, drinking water. Although Waffle first, I'm sure can do that.
Okay.
You know, like I said, I'm not sure how you would test that other than doing test wells like you do for petroleum-based problems with gas tanks and around storage tanks.
That's what I was thinking of. Okay, next question. Do you, you guys said these have lead in them, don't they? The panels do have some lead in them?
Yes, I'm telling you about them.
Okay, okay, good. I read the rest of the material about that. Um, you guys have any lessons learned, either positive or negative, from solar farm projects that you've been involved with in the past?
Yeah, I've got a lot of lessons that I've learned. Uh, so I don't know exactly what you, what kind of answer you're looking for specifically.
I'm looking at, a lot of, a lot of my questions here are geared toward developing a policy for.
Gotcha, yes.
For following on solar farms.
So I think, uh, with respect to thinking ahead in the future about how you wanna regulate this activity in the county, uh, there are a few things that, you know, several of us have participated over the years, um, in helping counties to sort of better, uh, arm themselves with information so that, you know, you can ask intelligent questions and, and really protect your constituents. Um, one, I think, is to have a decommissioning requirement, you know, put that in your ordinance so that not only does the solar farm commit to the landowner, but the solar farm commits to the county that, uh, you know, some type of decommissioning is required. Um, I think that there are, um, lots of sort of best practices related to developing solar, uh, you know, adhering to, obviously, you know, adhering to the ordinance is, uh, a given, but, you know, giving consideration to, um, view, view sheds and buffering, uh, trying your, you know, your very best to screen, uh, these facilities from view. Um, in my experience, most opposition to solar is, is related to, as Mr. Kirkland pointed out, to the view. Uh, people generally support solar as long as they don't have to, you know, look at it. Uh, and so I would suggest, you know, considering that if you're going to, you know, define, you know, specific, um, kind of constraints or conditions. Um, and then the other thing, um, that I've learned over the years is that it works, this process goes much more smoothly if you're, um, you know, kind of out in front of it as best you can. And so you, we work hard to engage with the, the landowners, the neighbors, uh, provide lots of opportunity for input, uh, and take the feedback and, uh, you know, do our best to integrate that into the, to the design and the site plan so that we can address as many of those concerns as we possibly can, just in the design. Um, and then, you know, be as transparent as we can about what the process looks like, how long it takes, you know, set expectations around, um, you know, what it's actually gonna be like to, to have that construction going on. So, you know, those are some of the lessons that I've learned. And most of those are the result of, you know, screwing up the process and having to deal with it. Uh, so, um, you know, just try to be good stewards and good neighbors.
And just one, one thing to add is that some of the early solar farms before, they were kind of more standard, um, solar farm ordinances that had been implemented, that you, um, some of those early solar farms, they had, um, really, um, small buffers and no landscape requirements. And so I think that what tends to make, and so what happened here is that, um, Lit Creek, you know, voluntarily agreed to an extensive fifty-foot buffer with landscape requirement. But I think that that's typically the most important thing in an ordinance is to have the landscape, to have a, a buffer requirement, and then the landscaping requirement that's, um, required to be in the buffer, uh, within the buffer. And that tends to make the neighbors, um, much more comfortable with the solar farm when there is that buffer and landscaping.
All righty. Um, does the final site plan come back to us for approval or to the planning board, or do you do that, David, the final site plan?
Based on what you do tonight, if it's approved and the conditions we have or the conditions that I thought were applicable to the project, uh, it'll come back to me for, you know, making sure that, just like I said in plans for building, I would view it and make sure they're in compliance with, uh, buffering, landscape buffering, uh, setback requirements. Uh, most of the engineering part, it, it's gotta be an engineered system when it comes to what we're talking about permitting. We're permitted, I'll flip hats when I come the inspector, uh, you know, electrical inspector, myself included, would take that part of the system. But we would be, we would be aware of a project, uh, just like any commercial project, uh, we would be on site to look at it. But long-term maintenance is just like we do for every project in the county, you know, we're gonna take a look at it.
Just final site plan. Okay, good. Well, next question. Will batteries be introduced to this project site in the future? And if so, will that present any issues that are not, haven't been discussed in the current proposal?
There are currently no plans to add batteries to this project. Um, if in the future a battery is proposed, then it would be brought back to the county planning board to talk about what the process is for permitting that addition.
Okay.
That's a substantial change. And those are typically, let's say, would request that, uh, then the rec, he would come to me and say, okay, we need to come back to, and we'll do the whole process again. You do have control for site-specific plans. So one of my concerns was that we didn't populate the county with solar farm after solar farm and claim it as economic development. But each individual case, just like each zoning case, will be heard by the board and on its own merits will stand. And I do have research on, uh, solar farm ordinance from other communities that are interested in that.
Okay, good.
If you choose to look at that.
I'm just curious, there was some information about batteries in the package, to speak my interest a little bit. Um.
And I was gonna say, one thing about the, the battery storage is that the costs for the batteries are really coming down. And so there's gonna, and, um, having energy storage added to solar farms provides significant benefits for the solar farm. So I think that, um, across the state, there'll be more and more, um, batteries that are added over time to the, to the solar farms due to the benefits that it can provide.
Okay, good. Um, what, with the vested rights request in your pa, in the package for five years, does that mean that, uh, that if you need it, you have up to five years to start construction on the project? You asked us to approve that, right, the vested right thing?
Their, their request, and there are vested rights in the zoning laws themselves. It's because of the expenditure that they'll do to get this project started, um, they, they need time.
But what does that mean, start construction within five years? Is that what it's basically saying?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we would not deny a permit like a, a regular building permit. They would have a vested right to continue on. And I think that was within the scope that, uh, the substation thing should be.
Yeah, a couple of years to do that.
Yeah, around, maybe two years, possibly, to get all that construction. They're kind of subject to what Duke Energy and their schedule is to actually start the construction if approved.
Just a quick, go ahead, sorry.
Because Duke is, uh, in charge of the construction substation, and so Lit Creek Solar has no, has very little control over Duke's construction plans and its timeline.
Yeah, okay, good. Uh, this is kind of just a quick opinion question. If, if there are rapid advances in solar technology, and technology does advance fast, as you guys well know, and I guess quantum computing or whatever is next, but if, if that happens, um, could this thing be rendered obsolete in, say, half of this period that it's going, that it's gonna be set up for? I mean, it, I mean, are the thoughts of along those lines or what, what would be done if it became that way, or?
So I think the, the best way I can answer that is first by saying, obviously, I, I can't predict the future, so I don't know, um, what may happen. Agreed, technology does move quickly. Um, but the reality specifically related to solar projects like this is that almost all of the capital required over the life of the project is needed to do the construction. So a lot of work is going, is going on right now for us to kind of secure financing to get the project built. Then over the life of it, relatively speaking, the cost of, to operate and maintain it is relatively low. And so, um, even if there were some other way to generate electricity very cheaply, um, this project, once paid for, is very cheap to run. And so I can foresee any kind of scenario where it wouldn't sit there and continue to generate electricity because it, just by sitting there, it's generating electricity.
Is there a possibility you would insert the new technology into this project?
There is the possibility that, uh, the panels, you know, they have a useful life. And because the entitlement that we're seeking here is, um, permission to build this by the county, by the state, um, and once that entitlement is in place, um, there's an incentive to continue to use it. And so I could see that if there's enough of, uh, an advance in sort of panel efficiency, we may replace those panels after some number of years.
Yeah, that was kind of my question. Okay, good.
But I think it's gonna continue to sit there and generate electricity. It's not gonna be obsolete so that you would come and take it away.
Okay, okay, good. That answered my question. Three, four more quick ones real quick here. Uh, the solar, uh, you know of any LLCs, solar LLCs that are gonna bankrupt and doing this business?
I do not.
Okay. I was thinking of Solyndra and all that rigmarole we had with them.
That's very different.
Um, who is Silver Creek Solar, and how, are they involved in this project?
Silver Creek Energy, uh, is the, the company that is, that owns, um, Lit Creek Solar.
Oh, they are, okay, okay.
Yes.
Uh, if, this is a little bit like the question I asked. Are you, have you encountered any unintended consequences from previous solar farms, either positive or negative? I mean, or if you've already answered that with the other question, that's fine.
I, I've, uh, I've experienced a lot of positive, uh, consequences that I maybe wouldn't have foreseen. Like, lots of people have come and told me that they thought they were gonna have to sell their land. And, uh, because they were able to do a small solar farm, say, like thirty or forty acres, they were able to keep hundreds of acres in the family because they were having, they were under significant pressure to sell the land for some other use. So I've heard that story several times. Uh, no negative consequences that I'm aware of.
Rick, I contacted other counties to get a determination what their impact was from planners that would be out in the field, and they did. And I never got, although one facility of fifty megawatts that were smaller, they didn't seem to have any real negative consequence from, uh, the neighbors or surrounding property owners having issues with the facility and, uh, being the director.
Okay. One last que, I think this is my last one. Um, the, uh, this fifteen-member panel that's gonna establish the decommissioning standards by 2022, um, you may have answered this earlier or addressed it, but will you be grandfathered before, if, since you're approved here before that gets put in, or will you guys modify or adjust to whatever that panel comes up with in that statute?
I think we, I think that we don't know yet whether we would be, whether we'd be grandfathered. Um, that would be, um, I can look a little bit more carefully and, um, and look into that and see if I can give you, um, an, an answer about that after the meeting.
Just feedback today, we think.
Right, because I'm not sure about what the answer would be.
Okay, okay. That's all I have, Ms. Chairman, except my closing statement, which I'd rather do later after y'all.
Thank you, sir. One thing about being the chair, you most unlikely to last all your questions, good to answer, sir. Um, of course, you know, that is by going to other boards. And, you know, our job appears to make sure everything that's being done here is the best for our citizens here in the county. Y'all have answered, uh, pretty much any question I would have. You know, my main concern was later on down the road, if it comes to goes bankrupt or whoever, who's gonna be responsible for this? And the main thing is, I don't want our citizens having to pay for this cleanup. Um, and as I've seen, y'all've got it kind of listed in here. Uh, basically, the cleanup's gonna cost about six hundred and some thousand if you're taking everything down and selling everything off. Am I correct on that? Uh, that's based off, most of that's based off what the current metal, scrap metal market and stuff like it, is that correct?
Yeah, that's sort of our best guess at what, um, those commodity prices might be, you know, sort of at the end of the useful life.
Okay. Um, I ain't really been in the land, I ain't took no solar panels in the landfill. I mean, what would be the cost of, like, this solar field here? What would be the cost of disposing those panels?
That cost is included in that study.
Time gate renewables, the cash might pass, what was it, six hundred and some, six hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, after you, um, after you deduct the value, the salvage value, it came out with a net expense of around six hundred and twenty-two thousand, by what you said. Right, and that, the, the cost of disposal is included in that cost.
Okay. And in no way possible in thirty years from now, this cannot come back on our citizens to pay for the cleanup?
I can't imagine that. I can't, I can't think of a way that it would, in any way, lean on anyone else's.
And ultimately, if, if all else fails, it goes back to Duke Power. Am I hearing that correct? They'll be the ultimate owner of that?
Well, I believe earlier, you're mistaken, but Duke, Duke Power, Duke Energy is buying a lot of these size facilities. Yeah, so there's no guarantee that Duke would own this facility.
Okay.
So that's not, if, if, if that's what I said, that's not what I meant.
Okay. I was just wanting to clarify that right there, because I know you said there's, they are coming to owners of some facilities, correct?
Yes, they are actively, uh, acquiring solar facilities in North Carolina as well as in other states. Uh, but, you know, any transaction with this facility specifically would be up to the owners of, you know, Silver Creek and the rest of them.
In a land use decision, you're looking at zoning a piece of property. You're not liable for all of the rezonings we've done for thirty-plus years that I, you were approving the land use condition. The owner or the responsible party, in this case Lit Creek or Silver Creek Energy, whatever the parent comes to be, is there ultimately responsible, just like Karen, an attorney, uh, would have to go back to that, uh, person who did the act or caused the problem on the property. Uh, the county would not be liable, although understanding you're concerned about the, the, maybe, uh, result of that liability or something happening on the property. But the county would not be responsible. That, that, so I mean, all over the state takes place every, you know, every month, and, and they're not responsible for the land use activity once approved. There are questions what we do to monitor it, but we're not responsible for that end result.
Right. And I'm just kind of looking at, like, where y'all are today, Duke Power's putting on, are trying to get a price increase on the power, uh, the average hundred dollars per household a year. And part of that was, they cleaned up the, uh, the ash air. I think that's part, I mean, I don't think that people should have to pay for that, but, but yeah, that's just one of the things.
And that's gonna be very much, uh, argued in the commission that, that that right equation occurs. So it's already, there's a lot of work that's already going into that right now.
Hey, there's people standing up for him. I appreciate that. Um, and you're telling us, from all the research that you guys have gathered from this, there is no chemical or any disturbance, like, any kind of toxins in the land at all, in the rivers, surrounding people's property, nothing at all. And, and there's, and there's documented proof on this.
That's correct, right.
Okay. That's pretty much all I've got. Um, with that, I guess we'll go ahead with the closing remarks. Commissioner Morse?
Okay, good. Uh, since I used to be county manager, now I'm an elected official, I've reserved the writing for the little politics in my closing statements, so I'm sure you'll recognize that. In closing, I would reiterate my earlier statement that a comprehensive solar farm policy is needed in Stokes County. And it's the board's job to develop that policy by our constituents who place us in these elected positions to protect their interests. Stokes County is a very scenic county anchored by a high-altitude state park that supports a growing tourism industry and the associated tourism revenue. I think our solar farm policy should be very specifically tailored to the unique tourism and agricultural activities that are the foundation of this county. I also think we should treat development and operation of the Lit, Lit Creek project as our, quote, canary in the coal mine to warn us and to provide lessons learned as we consider any future requests for additional solar farms. Solar farms do not fit my personal definition of the economic development, though they do provide what I would consider a less-than-desired level of tax revenue. In my opinion, solar technology is nowhere near the level of maturity and efficiency that it should be for deployment. I think if I was king for the day, it should instead be funded in a national laboratory or a private R and D concern to gain more technical, uh, maturity before it's deployed. My point is illustrated by the large amounts of land and taxpayer subsidies required to generate a relatively small amount of electric power, which also results in increased power costs for users at all income levels who really can't afford these increases. Therefore, I refer to solar power with my own personal acronym, P E P, political electric power. As we move forward with our county's solar policy development, I will request that we invite proponents and non-proponents of solar power to provide the board information so we ensure we have the facts on both sides of the argument to develop a well-balanced solar policy or solar farm policy. I do hope the Lit Creek project works out well for Wallack Cove and the surrounding area and for all the contractors and businesses who will be involved in the development and construction of the project. Hopefully, future advances in technology will make solar power a no-brainer for everyone. This would keep it from tying up thousands of acres of land for decades at a time, land that may be needed for numerous other purposes. And, uh, with that closing statement, the only other thing I would just refer back to, that I keep thinking about is those guys talking about this in 2017, and I found out about two years later. So I wanna, I would like our board to really get a grip on how this utility commission thing works. And if they're talking about us, I think we all know about it whenever they start. So, uh, with that, that's all I have, Ms. Chairman, with that.
Thank you, sir.
I will be posting this on my website too, for anybody who wants to look at it, the information that eventually you answered. I'll probably post the questions and the other information this week, and then eventually try to fill in the answers that you guys gave us to the questions. That's all I have. Commissioner Morse, Commissioner Gottes?
I have my closing remarks.
Commissioner, you want to help?
No, I, I think, uh, I covered everything that I needed to know as far as the, um, consistency and reasonability on our comprehensive plan of 2035. And, uh, I wanted, uh, I wanted to hear the, who would be responsible in a liability issue, and I got that answer. That's very important to me. We're representing Stokes County. I will make sure. I am, so I've got the answer.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I also have my closing remarks. County manager, do you have anything to add?
Sir, y'all have done a good job.
All right. But this is the board's. Is the board ready to proceed a vote? You too?
Hmm?
Yeah? Okay. Do I have a motion?
What's the motion need to say?
Yes, and there was one thing, Karen, in your conditions here, offer conditions, it did not mention the setback fifty feet from any property line. Since our ordinance is not specific to that, I would put that in as a condition of that exception.
Where are you going with that?
Okay, and that is on the sheet that you have, if you don't, just please make your motion consistent and reasonable with the plan. Either way, if you go forward with it, you can state the commissions as stated here, and you can just read them thoroughly, or anything else, but they have to agree, the applicant needs to agree to anything other than what's on that document without.
I'll make a motion, I guess, that, I mean, based on what I said in my opening statement, I don't think there's any information going to come up that would cause me to change my mind, but make a motion that we, does it need, what I need to say, David, to approve it?
Well, that it is consistent with the Stokes 2035 comprehensive plan and is a reasonable request.
That is, I'll make a motion that we approve the project based on it's, means the 2035 plan is a reasonable request.
And with the conditions listed.
With the conditions listed, do I have to read those?
Well, forward, just if you would, that's what I want.
Where they at? I don't know if I've got them here in front of me. All right. Particular, Rick?
The decommission and recycling.
Decommissioning within six months after the solar energy facility has ceased to produce electricity and the facility has reached its useful life, the owner of the facility shall immediately initiate the decommissioning plan for the facility. Recycling, or the decommissioning, the owner of the facility shall fully recycle all materials as reasonably possible. Landscaping, the panels shall be reasonably concealed from view by either natural vegetation or planted evergreen vegetation. When relying on existing vegetation, the buffer shall be no less than fifty feet in width. When using planted vegetation to conceal the fence and panels in locations where there is no view from residential structure, the applicant shall plant a staggered double row of evergreens in, in locations where the facilities can be viewed from a residential structure. The applicant shall use three rows of evergreens staggered. Using plant vegetation to conceal the facility, the vegetative buffer shall be no less than twenty feet in width. Final landscaping plan shall be approved by the planning director who is designated to ensure compliance with this condition. Then setbacks fifty feet from any property line. Is that it?
That's it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
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 It passes three to one. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make an adjourn.